This little chilly March 3rd, Bill's BOC meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask George Laurie if he would come forward and lead us in an implication.
As always, I'd like to thank the Deer County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Deer Ministers Association to open each of these meetings with a prayer. On Friday, I received a survey, survey paid for by the county, I think, from a professor at East Carolina University related to affordable housing. Not only was I excited to get such a survey, and I immediately filled it out, but I thought the content and presentation was beyond excellent. As I had communicated to Bob Woodard a few weeks ago, I believe the key to affordable housing on the Outer Banks is to convince the public that creating affordable housing is in their best interest. In other words, NIMBY must be replaced by YMB with a Y for yes. I think it took years to convince the public that beach nourishment was necessary before it became acceptable for our residents and homeowners to pay for it. The same is true of affordable housing. Hopefully, this survey and the committee studying this issue will be able to correctly market the concept to everyone who lives in Deer County. So I'd like to offer the following prayer. Blessed are you, Lord our God, sovereign of all, who has given us life, sustains us, and brings us to this season. We thank you and sing your praises for our lives which are in your hand, for our souls which are in your keeping. You are goodness, you are compassion, you have always been our hope. Be with these commissioners and others who serve Deer County. Guide them in their daily challenges with the issues in Deer County, such as affordable housing, dredging, our beaches, our healthcare system, and our educational facilities. Soften their hearts and open their minds so that every decision they make is the best one. Humble them to realize they are all human and make mistakes because the residents of Deer County will respect them even more. Almighty God, grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter in our resolve. Master of the universe, you have commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. May this be God's will, and all God's people say amen.
Amen.
All right, thank you. Stay safe, have a blessed day.
Thank you, George. May we stand to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll notice that Commissioner Creef is not with us this morning. He had surgery this past Friday, and he is at home recuperating as we speak and as we meet today. So if you'll keep him in your thoughts and prayers, it would be greatly appreciated. At this time, I'll turn it over to County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Okay, I have just one comment this morning, and that's just to remind the public that, or ask the public to be very patient with respects to Doge. We know that there is a lot of angst out there with respects to the Trump administration and their cost-cutting government. I want the public to be aware that the county has not been advised from the federal government or the state of any mandates by the Trump administration and Dodge to cut services, personnel, whatever. If and when we do, the public will be the very first to know of this. And as of this date, we have not had any mandates placed upon us to make any changes. So as soon as they, as soon as and if, and hopefully there won't be, but if there is, we will certainly let the public be aware. Secondly, I'd like to clarify something with respects to this housing survey East Carolina's doing. Now, I'm gonna put somebody on the spot this morning, but I know that they can handle it. I'm gonna ask Donna Creef, our...
She saw that coming.
I'm gonna, I've asked, I'm asking Donna to come forward and set the record straight how this came about, and I know I'm putting her on the spot, but she's very capable of being able to answer that question. So Donna, would you clarify?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to tell you how this came about. One of our task force members, Mr. Jeff Swartzenberg, who works for the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau, was at a conference in Greenville, North Carolina last year and come in contact with Ms. Professor Emily Jaeger, who's involved with the ECU study of workforce housing and community attitudes about that. And they had a conversation, and he said, you know, you really should talk to Donna Creef. And that's exactly what happened. He gave them my contact information. They reached out to me. We had a presentation, a Zoom call with them, the outreach subcommittee that the task force has, and we all thought, well, this is an opportunity to have public input from Deer County that's not costing the county anything. I want to repeat that again. It's not costing the county anything.
So we didn't pay for this study?
No, sir.
That's correct.
Despite my affiliation with East Carolina University, that had nothing to do with this. They approached me. The task force discussed it at a meeting and all agreed. Actually, the ladies from East Carolina come and did a presentation to the task force, and we all agreed that it was a good idea. I want to be very clear that the professors were going to do this regardless of whether the task force was in existence or whether we were going to participate with them. I was at the meetings in Kitty Hawk, I was at the meetings in Nag's Head. I have helped them get in touch with the people that they needed to get in touch with to set up the meetings. I felt it was appropriate for me to be there, and quite honestly, I sat in the room and eavesdrop on a lot of the conversations. I have no way, the task force will in no way influence the results of this survey that they're doing. There is an online survey for those who can't attend the open houses. I encourage everyone to take that survey. You know, all information is good information regardless of whether the opinions are something that we all may disagree with, or that I may disagree with, or that I'm skeptical of. And so I think, you know, they're doing a good job, and they're trying to do what they do. Is that what professors do? They get studies and they do research, and that's what this is. We will get the results of the task, the task force will get the results because, again, it's good, it's good information. I don't know what else to add, except we have two more open houses on Thursday here on Roanoke Island. They have some statistics that they present on boards that are very similar to some of the statistics that were in the task force report. But again, I want to be very clear that the survey is their survey, and there may be some remarks or some thoughts that the survey is biased in its questions. Well, the questions are designed to garner opinions on workforce housing and what workforce housing should look like. So naturally, there's going to be questions on whether it should be an ADU, or it should be this, but there is an opportunity on all of that to write in your own opinion. So if your opinion is, is, I think this is wrong, I don't think there's a problem, I think the county should leave it alone, by all means, you need to write that down because those ladies are going to compile all that. And I'm gonna stop right there if you have any other questions. Again, I want to emphasize that this is not costing the county anything. The professors were doing this on their own. I don't know what, what East Carolina, what it's costing East Carolina, but you know, the task force are all volunteers. We don't get paid to go to the meetings. I prepare the summaries of the subcommittee meetings. We do have assistance with the task force meetings, but I'll be glad to take on that task because this, you know, this isn't, this isn't, I'm not getting paid for this. If it's a problem with us to hold the meetings here in Deer County, we can find another meeting room. But that's just it. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity. I just read some of the comments on one of the local media outlets, and it's just, you know, just strikes a nerve sometimes.
Strikes a nerve, doesn't it, Donna?
Well, it just, it never ceases to amaze me how misinformed people are, and they just willy-nilly make statements that are inaccurate.
Well, yes, sir.
That's why I asked Donna to come up this morning and set the record straight.
And I just want to relay something that happened at the Kitty Hawk Open House. There was a gentleman that was there, and he saw me sitting in the back of the room after chatting with the professors, and he came over and he said, so Donna, what's the problem? And I was like, what do you mean, what the problem is? He said, I don't think there's a problem with housing. So I engage, we engaged in some conversation. Well, lo and behold, the Kitty Hawk Police Chief was there and heard, overheard the conversation and come over and said to the guy, I'll tell you what the problem is, is I can't hire police officers. And so, anyway, I don't know if it changed the gentleman's mind, I don't think so, but it was a good exchange. And so I think that, you know, there's a benefit from hearing from the public sector out there who truly does struggle to find first responders that live in Deer County where they work. And so, anyway.
Donna, I find the commenters are often uninhibited by facts, accuracy, or detail. Number two, did the professor Jaeger?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I sit on the CSI, the Coastal Studies Institute Board, and their director, Dr. Corbett, Reed Corbett, has been laboring and straining for student housing so that they can bring more ECU students during the school year to take classes, study at CSU, and it's been a very big problem for them. Did the professor get a couple of the data points from your housing task force study, like the median home price, area median income, percentage of families that are experiencing housing pressure, and there's, there's not a problem? I mean, all you have to do is look at those three, and it's pretty obvious.
They had some very similar statistics, and I believe some of the median prices they were using were coming from a different organization than the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, I believe it was Zillow, but they were referencing things from the American Community Survey in terms of the median housing income, and they had population numbers. And so they have a lot of, they had a, I think it was six big charts in the room there that, there's a QR code that I'll be glad to share with Dorothy so everybody could see those charts and comment on them, just like they can the survey. But you know, we're just trying to increase participation in the survey as a courtesy for the East Carolina University, and so that was why I had shared the link with Dorothy, who shared it with the towns. I shared it with the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and so, you know, we're just trying to help out East Carolina University because they're, you know, doing, doing good work, in my opinion.
Where can you see the, where can you get the link? Is it on?
It's on the county's webpage.
Okay, on the county's website.
And I'm sure it's probably on all of the towns. And then I think they've posted it on the Outer Banks Voice as well.
Thank you.
Donna, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, would this be, would this be appropriate time to add that appointment to the?
Yeah, amend the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can do that now. We'd like to, Commissioner Bateman would like to amend the agenda under item 16, add item five, Airport Authority Appointment. Is there a motion to do so?
Send it.
Okay, is motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Bateman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. At this time, many of us at this table were awaiting the monthly humorous interlude of a joke from the chair.
I didn't do that this morning. I didn't do that. I didn't, I didn't do that this morning. But I will, now that you mention it, I will. Now that you mention it. There was this elderly lady that went to church, and pastor said, you know, this morning, if I'll let you, anybody that wants to make a $500 donation, you can pick out the three hymns for this morning. Sure enough, a little old lady was all the way in the back of the church back there, and she raised her hand, and he recognized her, and he said, yes, ma'am, thank you so much, and I appreciate you making that offering of 500 this morning. So what three hymns would you like to choose? She said, I'll take hymn, I'll take hymn, and I'll take hymn.
Very good, very good, sir. All right.
Does that make you happy now? County Manager?
Yes, sir. Now's the time we have for the service pins. Today, we have one pin for 35 years of service, and Dave, I'd ask you to come down front. Your favorite thing. I don't get to come down here very often with a pin that has a white or a diamond-colored little thing in the Deer County logo, because those are the 35-year pins, and we don't do very many 35-year pins. Doing a 35-year pin is, kind of brings you mixed emotions. One is, you're really excited because you have somebody that stayed with the county for 35 years, has done a good job, has been here for a long time, added a lot to what we do, added a lot to all the things, the services that the county provides and so on. The negative is that when you're up here with a 35-year pin, you know you're at the end of their career, you're not going to get many more, if any, years out of them. And that's where we find ourselves this morning. Dave's been here 35 years. When you look up there on the wall at all of those county commissioner chairmans, he was here for all of them. And so he's been here a long time. Pretty much everything that you see in the county, every building that you got, every program that we have, everything that the county does or has done over the last 35 years, Dave's had a finger in that. There's some contribution he made, whether it's the financing, whether it's just advice, whether it's applying logic to what we do. Whatever it is, he's had a hand in making those decisions, and you can look around and what success we have, he's had a big part of that. We know he's already announced that he's going to be retiring at the end of this fiscal year, so we're going to be missing that. We're going to have a big hole, and somebody's going to have to come in and start their own 35-year career. I challenge whoever that is to match the contributions that Dave's made to Deer County. You can go out in that hall and look at, I don't know how many awards there are out there now, I've lost count, but there's one for every year just about that he's been here. How many?
How many, Dave?
Thirty-four. So every year, but every year but the first year, we've gotten awards for the work that they've done in the finance office, and they're hanging out, out there on the wall. We took a county that was just another county in northeast North Carolina, and now, you know, we're a county that is a double A-plus rated county, and if we didn't have tourism as our, the base of our economy, we'd be a triple A-rated county because our finances are good and the things we do are right, and our policies are right. And those are all things that Dave did for us and made happen for us. And so I'm really happy for Dave. He's given a lot, and now he gets to take some time and enjoy. I know he likes to travel, he's got his kids all over the country, and just to see all them and be around them more than he's had the opportunity to do is going to be a nice thing for him and his wife. So I'm happy for him. I'm sad for us and sad for me because, you know, he's been my right-hand person. He's the guy that, again, I told you, he has his hand in just about everything. There's not many decisions that I make that he and I don't talk about a little bit and seek out his advice and his input. So again, I'll certainly miss him. I think the county is going to miss him, but I can't say enough good things about the good things that he's done for us. He's put us in a good position. If somebody's going to leave, then we're in the best position we could be in for somebody to leave and do that, and he's made that happen. And so, again, Dave, congratulations for 35 years. Thank you for all the great things that you've done for Deer County, and enjoy your retirement.
Thanks to all of you, especially Bobby. It was almost one year. I came from Charlotte, from Deloitte, and there were things with that 50, three months a year, you had to have 55 billable hours by Saturday at lunch, and the city of Charlotte was my only client in town, a lot of travel. I came here. I just went back and counted. There were 11 audit findings. The management letter was 16 pages long. The debt rating was double B or triple B. And true, I called Woody Nail, my audit partner back in Charlotte in December, and asked if I could come back. And that's my other thanks, is thanking Terry Wheeler, Bobby's predecessor, for putting me in charge about a month after that. So 90% of the time, I'm glad I stayed, so thanks all of you.
Next, we have our Employee of the Month, and William Nash is going to make that presentation.
Welcome this morning.
Good morning. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. As he said, I'm William Nash, and I'd like to present Lori Seal. She's been with Deer County quite a long time, actually. Her, I have with me also her supervisor, Jessica King. Jessica and Lori's coworkers got together and wrote something real nice for her and recommended her for Employee of the Month. Being at their words, I'm going to let her take over and present. But again, congratulations, Lori. I'm going to step back and let y'all take it.
Thank you for having us this morning. I think the Employee of the Month program is a growth program, and I'm very excited that this month it is going to Lori Seal. Lori Seal is an amazing part of the Water Department team. She's wonderful to work with, always coming to work with a positive attitude. She is flexible and willing to go out of her way for her work family, whether it is adjusting her work schedule, picking up a new project, or bringing donuts to the plant operators after an unexpectedly long night. Not only is Lori always there to support her team, she also does this with her customers. I have watched her and listened to her time and time again, patiently and positively help customers through anything they need, from a 10-second billing question to a much longer and more difficult issue. Lori's patience, care, and positivity make our work environment better. It is a privilege to have such an honest, hardworking, and charismatic person in our office. You're welcome.
That brings us to public comment, Mr. Chairman. If you just received an award, Dave, we'll do ours later, but for those of you who received the award, if you'll go right outside to get a picture made, please. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that'll come on when your time begins, there's a yellow light that will come on. When you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. First on the list is Ronnie Sloan. Do you have a public comment? Okay. Next, and I'm gonna, I can't read the last name, it said Tiana Stathers. Please come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us all here today. I am Tiana Stathis, representing the League of Women Voters of Deer County, and I'm here to present the 2025 Citizens' Guide, Your Guide to County Services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Deer County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters, Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to all staff members who helped update information in this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,400 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Deer. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the Baum infested-in centers, as well as town and county offices. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age. Thank you for support, thank you for your support. We know you'll find your guide useful. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that each year. It's really, really nice of y'all to do that, and it's very, very helpful as well.
Thank you. It's very well-received in the community, and we are one of the only leagues in the country that produce this, so.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this morning? Anybody else here for public comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment from Buxton?
No comment.
That, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment and move on to item five. This is a presentation by Joan Collins and others for the P. Island Preservation Society, and I think they have a video and a presentation for you.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Collins. Always glad to have you with us.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate being here. What we would like to do is just to show the video now, and then we'll talk about it afterwards. So if you would just show it.
Absolutely.
And here we go. We didn't bring popcorn.
This video is part of our continued efforts to raise awareness of the story of keeper Richard Etheridge and the P. Island lifesavers. The name, A Checkered Past, is intended to remind people of their forgotten history and of a period when people were labeled as being either black or white in order to determine what rights and opportunities they were afforded. During the time the P. Island Station existed, a lifesaving station with the crew of both black and white surfmen was known as having a checkerboard crew. Many have heard the story of Etheridge's life and the all-black crew he commanded at Station P. Island. However, the story of the checkerboard crew he once served on before taking command of the P. Island Station is not well-known. The story of checkerboard crews is also a reminder of the story of the enslaved and the free. Men with beards, mustaches, tan skin... Men with beards, mustaches, tanned skin, and curly hair, who in many instances looked the same and had the same last names, but whose lives, experiences, and opportunities were very different. Their fight is our fight. Our logo is intended to be a bold reminder of this forgotten history and of the challenges men like Etheridge and the P. Island Lifesavers faced daily simply because they were not On January 24, 1880, Etheridge, who grew up enslaved on Roanoke Island and who at the time was the lowest-ranked surfman at a neighboring station, was selected to be in charge of the P. Island Station. Those who recommended him portrayed him as the best surfman on the coast, black or white, and as good a surfman there was. While enslaved, he had been taught to read and write, and he had also risen to the rank of sergeant while serving during the Civil War. Yet, after his selection as keeper, the whites who worked at the station were quickly reassigned, and within a few months, the P. Island Station was burned to the ground. On October 11, 1896, Keeper Richard Etheridge and surfman Benjamin Bowser, William Irving, Dorman Pugh, Theodore Meekins, Louis Westcott, and Stanley Wise performed one of the most daring rescues in United States lifesaving service history. During hurricane conditions and in the darkness of the night, they saved nine onboard the shipwrecked E.S. Newman, the captain, his wife, and three-year-old son, and six others. They would never live to wear the prestigious gold lifesaving medal on their chests. They did receive this award. Unfortunately, it was issued 100 years after their famous rescue of the shipwrecked E.S. Newman. By then, each had long died. The video highlights two events held in 2023 and will be used as part of our continued efforts to tell the story of Keeper Richard Etheridge and the P. Island Lifesavers using creative methods and approaches.
Well, you're seeing a display here called A Checkered Past, and it's the story of Keeper Richard Etheridge and the P. Island Lifesavers. So we're just delighted that Dare Arts agreed to put this on display for the very first time here in Dare County.
The program today is very special. It's about history that's been lost, and the P. Island Preservation Society has brought it to life. And all you youngsters here, I'm sure that you've heard it about your history and about the history of the checkerboard crew and the colored news. And it's important for us at the College of the Albemarle to support all of our organizations that bring back the history of our great country.
I think this project's necessary for us to really understand the true history behind the Coast Guard, behind lifesavers in general, on this island and abroad. I think it's amazing that I'm a part of such an amazing family that has done so much for the country.
We are so happy and excited that you decided to take your Saturday and rescheduled yourself so that you could be here to listen to this wonderful history.
I'm related to the checkerboard crew through my great-great-grandfather, Joseph Hallberry, and like, who else?
His father.
Maxine Barry.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jason Barry. I'm a descendant of the checkerboard history of the P. Island Lifesaving Station. My great-great-grandfather is Joseph Hallberry, served under Keeper Richard Etheridge. My family history is the history of the enslaved and the Native Americans who once lived on Roanoke Island. I've also been told my family's last name is even the same last name as one of the English who first arrived on Roanoke Island.
My dad, Frank Hester, is his great-grandfather. It's Joseph Hallberry. Also, my great-uncle was one of the keepers at the station and helped decommission it. We've just come such a long way, and it's cool for my kids, who also live here with me, to be able to share this story because it's a part of their history, not just for African-Americans, but for Americans and all the things that we can do to unite each other and grow. So I just think it's really cool that we're sharing the story and it's, we're teaching others about becoming united.
I stand here as a reminder of the story, of the story of the enslaved and the story of the freedom. I am also happy to be here in place of my grandfather, Darrell Collins, a loved native of Roanoke Island and a Manayou Town Commissioner. Many of you here today know him. Unfortunately, he could not be here today, but he sends his regards. I also know he wants me to tell everyone to learn the black history of Roanoke Island. He wants us to learn it, share it, and help make this history known.
My family has a long history of service in the United States Coast Guard. My father, actually, Dee, was the one who closed the doors on the P. Island Lifesaving Station in 1947, Herbert Collins. He's the one who the boathouse is named after.
It's an important part of the history here, not just for Black History Month, but for everyone. Black history should be celebrated each and every day. As Pipsy youth volunteers, we have been taught to learn about the black history of Roanoke Island.
But a lot of the reason why I wanted to be here and be present today, so I could learn and figure out the answers to that particular question. It's so amazing to me, once you really start digging up information and facts, the more you learn, there's connections and people sometimes we walk past that are family members that we don't even know.
I've also learned a lot about the black history of Roanoke Island. Don't y'all like our new Pipsy logo?
It has truly been an honor and a joy, and I've learned so much from our Pipsy youth, and we just appreciate and love all that they're doing.
Words can't describe how, you know, proud I am, everything that he accomplishing, you know, continue to accomplish. Just keep up the good work, keep your head up.
History should be history. It should not be black history versus American history. Black history is American history.
On the one hand, it makes me sad that what, you know, people had to endure and that it took so long for the word to come out, but then on the other hand, it makes me feel really good that the word is finally coming out. There's so much inequity in this world, and I'm just happy to see that people are trying to unify and trying to correct the wrongs that have been done for my ancestors.
It takes people of courage to help to set the record straight and to do things because it is the right thing. And the ability of Richard Etheridge to fill in that gap and to perform like the service needed and to perform, set the standard not only for blacks, but for all people.
And that's what Frank and I have done. We try to serve our community. We try to make an impact and leadership and help the children so they can see that they don't have to always look at the negative, they can look at the positive and how Richard Etheridge paved the way for both of us.
Failure to learn and understand our collective histories means we're sure to repeat the past. Are we choosing ignorance instead of growing in knowledge? Because if we are, it'll ensure that we raise and foster generations that are filled with hate and that are filled with a lack of acceptance of others. But if we're choosing knowledge, we're fostering generations that are justice-seeking and loving.
James is going to unveil this new painting, and it's a painting of the checkerboard crew. No matter what you are called, no matter what you look like, no matter what you are labeled as being, it does not and it should not ultimately define who you are or what you can be. This video was created as part of our Freedmen, Surfmen, Heroes education initiative. Funding for this video and the two events highlighted was provided by the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation and supplemented by support received from the Outer Banks Community Foundation and the town of Mantio. We urge everyone to look, listen, and think about this history. If you have or know of information connected to the history of Keeper Richard Etheridge and the P. Island Lifesavers, or if you want to share your thoughts about the significance of this history, we would love to hear from you. Please join us in our fight to make this history widely known. Artwork displayed are by the artists James Melvin and Jasmine Miller and by the late artists John de la Vega and Roy Ladron.
So first of all, I want to say thanks again, in particular to Commissioner Ross and Commissioner Burris, who I think saw this film when we presented it at the College of the Albemarle. We presented three films at the College of the Albemarle called Pipsy, where the P. Island Preservation Society, Inc., and I encourage people to say Pipsy, past, Pipsy past, Pipsy present, and Pipsy future. It was co-produced by me and this young man here, stand up Elijah. This is Elijah York. He's, I call him an up-and-coming film producer out of Asheville. He was just here last Saturday, and when he heard we were going to do this, he wanted to be here also. I'm a board member of the P. Island Preservation Society. I serve as the Director of Outreach and Education. Frank Hester is here with me today. Frank is a board member. Other board members are Coquette, Lavernena Brooks, who's been sick with the flu, Doug Stover, you guys probably know these names, Tanya Collins, who was Darrell Collins's wife, is a board member, and Darrell Collins, who I'm sure everyone knows, passed away on Christmas Eve. He was the founder of our organization. Most know him mainly for the Wright Brothers, but this was his other passion, to bring this history to life. And the Cook House Museum vision, to have the Cook House at Collins Park, was that of his mother, Dell Collins, who served as a Mantio Commissioner for several years. Anyway, we're showing this to you. We think it's an incredible history, a story that not only represents local history, state history, but I always say it's a national story, and we're just trying to do all we can do to bring attention to it. Our logo, as you saw, is intended to highlight this history in a different way. We changed it to this checkered life ring logo. And because this station existed also for 67 years, primarily under black leadership and with black surfmen, I mean, just think about it. It's right here in Dare County, in the South, shortly after the Civil War, during Reconstruction, the Jim Crow movement, before the civil rights movement even begins. And we also recognize it's a complicated history. It really is, particularly here. You know, many locals have the same last names, but they've lived very different lives. But we try to teach it in a way that gets people at all ages to think about it. Our Freedmen, Surfmen, Heroes education initiative has included live programming. I don't know how many of you have seen our live program that we used to do, but we've been in Dare County elementary schools, at the aquarium, at the graveyard of the Atlantic Museum, at Island Farm, as well as other locations in the community, just trying to get, raise awareness of this history and get people to think about it. Our education initiative has included artwork. You've seen some of the artwork on the screen, the artwork of James Melvin. It's included music. You've been to our Juneteenth concert. I'm sure you've heard the name Tashambi Selby, and hopefully we'll do that again this year. We're here because we want feedback. We want your feedback. At the College of the Albemarle, we have these little forms. I'm going to leave them. You don't have to fill out your name, but we really do want your reaction to what you've seen, what you liked, your thoughts, and we want to consider them as we move to do more. If you're free from 11:30 to 1:30 today, we invite you to the Cook House Museum. Elijah is going to be there. And Elijah, why don't you just say a few words to close this out? Give him a hand here. And by the way, Elijah did an absolutely wonderful interview with James Melvin yesterday. A lot of new good stuff came out, so Elijah, go on.
I don't have much to say, but thank you for presenting this video here. Thank you for just giving us the proper platform to be able to show this. I think one of the challenges of being a videographer, a video producer, is having distribution for video content or for short films, and to be able to present it here shows that there's a potential of presenting it farther, in a broader reach. And as Joan was saying, it is a complicated story, but I try my best to really hone in on the humanity of it and the universal aspect of it, because there's parts of the story that we can all identify with. And if we can find ways of being able to push this further, then I think that would be the ultimate goal. And it's rewarding as a filmmaker to see your work being displayed in many different areas. So again, thank you for having us, and it really is an honor to be here. So thank you.
So hopefully, we've gotten your attention, and again, we thank you for the opportunity to do this, and we hope to do more, hoping to get, if we can hold attention for 15 minutes, we're hoping we can do something really special and turn our live Freedmen, Surfmen, Heroes messaging into something longer that, you know, that would be obviously appropriate for all age levels. So thank you very much.
Well done, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Appreciate it.
Okay, and I'm going to leave these forms on the table. Feedback, feedback, everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Real quick, because I want to make sure I get it right. When we saw it on last Saturday at the COA.
Yes.
It was during the 67-year period that that was in commission, the lifesaving station, 600 lives.
The P. Island Station is credited with 600 rescues, about 600 rescues.
600 rescues. That's 600 people went on to live life, went on to have families, went on to, nothing short of the word hero to describe those gentlemen and the work they did.
No, absolutely. And our education initiative, the words Freedmen, Surfmen, Heroes, is very purposeful because, you know, the story of freedom here is obviously a big story. The story of surfmen, it's kind of the fabric of our community in lifesaving, these men who save people on the sea, and the heroes that they became.
And what you said about the list of names they had there, you know, still local last names, a lot of them, some of those last names I'm kin to, and it's just, it's really impressive to see that part of our local history and something I'm very proud of, too, you know, being born and raised here in Dare County. It's something I love to see, you know, getting the recognition it deserves.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Collins. Chairman, now we'll move on to the more mundane. Ozzy Wilson's here to bring us the results of the 2025 countywide revote.
Good morning.
Welcome this morning.
Good morning. Hope everybody's doing well.
Bring us your mundane report.
I got it. It's longer than Ms. Collins, that's for sure, but I hope you find it enjoyable. It's been five years since I've been up here doing this. I did it in 2020, presenting the results. I got a lot of people to thank to get to this point. It's a lot of work, thousands of man-hours, but to respect everyone's time, I'm just going to say thank you, and they know who they are. And that includes you all as well, because we couldn't do what we do without the support And that includes you all as well, because we couldn't do what we do without the support and the means to be able to accomplish these tasks. This is years of work, well over two years, and so I certainly do appreciate it. I think we have all the tools, we have the education, we have the ability, and we have produced what I consider a superior product than we ever have in the past. And the reason I say that is because we have tools that allow us to see and analyze things that we haven't been able to see like we have before. So I feel confident that these values are equitable and accurate. And I'm glad to be up here today. This is the end of one process, or almost the end of one and the beginning of another. So that being said, throughout this, I will talk, I'm trying to limit my talk to like how normal people talk, so I don't talk like a tax person, because most people don't understand what I'm talking about. And it's taken me some time to figure that out, because there's only, there's roughly, there's 100 assessors in the state, and there's probably 1,000 support property staff of all levels who talk like I do, but the majority of people don't. And this can be very confusing, and I understand that. And so I've tried to make it more understandable. I began to look in preparation for this, and I didn't prepare this. I kind of advised on how to prepare, but I'm fortunate to have a great staff who are skilled in different things, and so I can rely on them to do these things. I'll talk about appraisal terminology from time to time, and I need Dorothy and her team to help me make people understand, because she will say, Hosee, what exactly are you talking about? And I understand that. So the term revaluation is...
Thank you, Dorothy.
So I'll present the results. In looking at the last presentation, it was filled with data. And if I remember correctly, it was an evening meeting. I think I stood up here and talked for well over an hour about statistics. And after a while, I mean, they're very meaningful statistics, but they don't really explain the process. And I believe that we owe it to our taxpayers to be able to explain what we do and why we do it, and why we have to do it, and how we do it. And if you don't agree with it, then there's a way that you can address that. And in the past, we haven't done a very good job of explaining that. So this presentation is completely different than the past presentations regarding revaluations. So all that said, I'll just go into it now. So the 2025 revaluation, it's five years since our last one in 2020. Now, there's a lot that's gone on in the last five years. So when you think about where we were and where we've been, it's really quite interesting. So what is a revaluation? Revaluation, and before I even start, I will use the term reappraisal and revaluation, they are the same. They are interchangeable. So if you hear me say reappraisal, it means revaluation and vice versa. So that's one thing I don't want to confuse anyone, and I think clarity is the key to this presentation, and I think I can point out some very interesting things, and, you know, I'm not going to, obviously, our tax base estimate increases are significant. We knew that. That's no surprise to anyone, really, but, so I'll just go into the presentation. If you have any questions, stop me, and I'll try to get back on track. I'm not going to guarantee it, but I'll do my best. So what is a revaluation? Revaluation is the appraisal of all real property in the county at its current market value as of a particular date, and that date in North Carolina is always January 1. Real property is land and the improvements to land, and it can be residential, it can be commercial, agricultural. We don't have a lot of agriculture. We have very little agricultural land, but we do have some forestry tracts, which would probably be surprising to some people. Industrial property, I'll throw out some other ones, boat slips, condominiums, co-ownerships, So all real property is valued at that same point in time. Why do we do it? Well, we have to do it because the law requires it. It requires that every county in North Carolina has to do reappraisal every eight years. Our current cycle is five years, and over time, I think eight years is, certain statutes are somewhat antiquated, but I think the common consensus now is more frequent reappraisals. And that is why we moved to a five-year cycle. I really believe that the four-year cycle is the most accurate for the markets that we have and our market activity. But the second point is really the most important reason we do it. It distributes the tax burden equitably across the entire tax base with everything brought to current market value. What's market value? Market value is the most probable price that a property will bring in an open and competitive market. It's an arm's length transaction between buyers and sellers. It's not distressed sales, it's not short sales, it is a willing buyer-seller transaction, and that is what we have to consider. The next point is very important, and some of these slides are a little wordy, and I probably won't read them verbatim, but over time, properties change in value, most of them do, but they change at different rates, depending on where they are. And that is a common theme throughout this presentation. Next slide. We don't create market value. Some people would argue that we do, but we don't. We only analyze market trends, market activity, market sales, patterns in the market, and we apply those sales characteristics to unsold properties. That's the key to what we do, and that is a very difficult challenge. Buyers and sellers create markets. Their motivations create markets. When will it occur? Well, the revaluation became effective January 1 of 2025. When will people be notified of their value? By the end of this month, we will send value notices to all Dare County property owners, and they will contain the assessed value of the property that reflects the current market value as of January 1. And these new assessed values, they will be used to calculate tax bills until the next revaluation. Three steps to revaluation. Now, our Schedule of Values has more steps than this, and it's a very detailed, lengthy document that is basically an encyclopedia of how we bring our current market to January 1, 2025. How do we get these properties from this value to this value, to what they sold for? So, collection of physical characteristics. Now, this is not something we go out and measure all properties at one time and look at all of them. I mean, this is something that is compiled over time with building permits. We've got to know the property to be able to appraise it. We've got to see it. So the next step, we analyze sales of properties to determine these trends I'm talking about. What's going on in the market? Where is it going on in the market? Things like that. Then we develop the Schedule of Values, the document I referred to. You know, we had, I think, three meetings prior to this one, the presentation of the Schedule of Values, the public hearing for the Schedule of Values, and then the adoption of the Schedule of Values. Well, the Schedule of Values is what is used to reach the culmination of where we are now, because all these property characteristics, all these parcels are applied to this new schedule, and the value is as such. Why do we do it this way? Well, we've got to appraise roughly 45,000 individual parcels all at one time, all different types of properties. That's a difficult challenge. In most tax jurisdictions in the country, I would argue to say probably all of them, do the same thing. And the process is called mass appraisal. We use, it's not practical to use the same scope of work that an independent, single property appraisal. We don't have time to do that. So we apply statistical analysis through industry standards that arrive at reasonable, reliable values. And one thing that we do have is we have an appeals process in place to address issues where we may have limited information about certain properties, we may have lack of sales of certain type properties. I mean, we got a lot of sales. I'm getting ready to show you how many we have, or how many were considered for this reappraisal. But that appeals process is in place for that reason. Not everything fits a model like it's, like you think it would. A lot of times, things fall outside, and that's what this process is for. How do we know it's right? I just mentioned, we use statistical analysis that measure the accuracy of the work that we're doing, of the appraisals that we're doing. We use sales ratios, most common measure of central tendency that basically relates the sales price with the current market value. Formula is assessed value divided by sales price. It is just the ratio of those two. It's pretty simple calculation, but it can show you a great deal. And a meaningful sales ratio considers multiple sales at typical market values. The more you have, the more accurate and reliable your data is. If you don't have many instances of transactions, or you have distressed transactions or non-market typical transactions, they produce misleading results, and we don't use those for that reason. I just talked about sales ratio. It's a formula that basically shows how our appraisal methodology matches with market activity, how these assessments match up to the sales. Assessed value divided by sales price, very simple. You find, say you have a group of properties, you do sales ratio on a group of sales of similar type properties, you array these from lowest to highest, and the middle number is the median, and we always work with median. We don't typically work with average, because it's affected greatly by outliers, where the median is not. I'll talk a little bit about coefficient of dispersion. Don't really want to go that deep into that, but what that is, is how far your ratios in a group are from the median ratio. So how close are those groups together? Or how close are those properties with the median? And you want to be close. So we have a disclaimer here, because I'm getting ready to provide the tax base estimates that everybody's been interested in seeing, but these numbers are subject to change slightly based on, I mean, we're still reviewing properties, not for the first time. I mean, all these sales that I'm getting ready to talk about, I've seen them more than once, and, you know, so it's a continual process up until when the revaluations or notices are mailed at the end of the month. We might acquire information that we didn't have that may have an effect on the value of certain properties, and if we do, then we will act on that. And of course, any information or data changes are subject to appeal process, just like any of these values I'm getting ready to provide you are subject to appeals. So our sales ratio results, the AAO, International Association of Assessing Officers, they set sales ratio industry standards, and they say the median sales ratio should be between 90 and 110. That's expressed as a percentage, it's not in this slideshow, but, so you should be 90% between 90% and 110% of market value. We're shooting for 1, we're shooting for 100. That's difficult, you know, it sounds easy, but it's very difficult. So, and they say the COD should be 10 to 15. Well, our results are based on 2,898 qualified sales between January 1st of '22 and December 31st of 2024. I mean, we looked at 21 sales, but they're difficult to time adjust, and sometimes you don't arrive at market value the further back you are in your reappraisal. So we didn't use those in our analysis. They are certainly considered, but we didn't use them. So our median sales ratio, this is for all properties, it's not stratified by different property types, different areas, this and that, is 96.8, and our COD is 2.15. That's pretty low. What does it mean? A median sales ratio close to 100 means we pretty much achieved market value with our appraisal methodologies. Low COD indicates that our sales ratios are grouped really close to the median ratio, which means our assessments are consistent. They're both important, because it measures level of appraisal and accuracy of appraisal. And that's not just for sold properties, we have to apply those to unsold's as well, which again, is quite a challenge. So this is the 2020 revaluation tax base, and just to clarify, we're comparing 2019 and 2020, but prior to 2020, the last reappraisal, it was a seven-year cycle, was in 2013. So these numbers and the countywide change in the tax base didn't all happen in one year. That's a misconception that a lot of people have. How did the values go from this to this in one year? Well, they didn't. It's a process over time. So in 2019, our tax base was 12.6 billion. In 2020, after that reappraisal, it was 15.9 billion, and the overall aggregate increase was 26%. So the 2025 tax base estimate, when we mail notices the end of this month, the 24 base is 16.4 billion, the 25 base will be 27.4 billion. Overall countywide change estimated is 67%.
Hosee, there was a collective gasp and falling out of chairs going on when we saw that.
There's not that many people here, though.
Yeah, I'm talking about up here on the podium.
Up here.
And I'm one of them.
Well, I'm going to show you some.
And I saw it already.
I got more slides, don't worry, don't worry.
Still falling out of my chair.
That's okay. I understand. I mean, and we spoke before the meeting, I thought it'd be higher, so I was a little surprised it was as low as it was. These are estimates by county area. Now, it goes back to what I said earlier about properties change at different rates and by location, and this is really interesting, I think. So Northern Beach is 55 to 74%, Hatteras Island 55 to 62%, Roanoke Island 49 to 69%, Mainland Dare 37 to 69%. Now, I'm having difficulty reading that slide, but that is all 22 districts, and I might have one that I can see, but, well, I can't see it very well. But I'm not going to read the... But I'm not going to read the actual numbers, but I'm going to read the percents because I think it's pretty interesting. I think you will as well. So this Northern Beach is Collington, 64% change. Kill Devil Hills, 69%. Kitty Hawk, 74%. Kill Devil Hills Outside, 55%. Nags Head, 71%. Southern Shore, 74%. Duck, 73%. Martins Point, 66%. This Roanoke Island, Manio, 57%. Manio Outside, 49%. Wanchee, 69%. Hatteras Island, Avon, 60%. Buxton, 62%. Frisco, 57%. Hatteras, 57%. Rodanthe, 55%. Salvo, 60%. Wave, 62%. Mainland Dare, East Lake, 37%. Mans Harbor, 69%. Mashuse, 42%. Stumpy Point, 56%. So that's pretty telling, really, by area.
What do you mean by Kill Devil Hills?
Manio Outside? It's outside the town limits. It's not within the town. So it's a district of its own outside the town that is actually unincorporated area for the county. Okay. That's what that is. There, Manio Outside is a larger district, obviously, but Kill Devil Hills Outside is Bombay area and things like that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So there's the total taxable, 24, 16.422 billion. And 25 estimates, 27, 453 billion. Let's see. Again, I'm on different areas, different changes for areas. And these are examples of market activity in the different areas in the county. It's not every district. I think we have 10 examples. And they're relatively recent sales. So this property is located in Duck. 2020 assessed value is 1,894,800. Sale date is March 8th of 2024. The sale price is 3,250,000. Increase is 58%. Properties in Southern Shores, 2020 assessed value, 1,240,800. Sold February 26th of '24 for 2.3 million.
Jose, this particular house is right down the road from my house.
Yes, sir.
And 2020 was still under construction.
Right.
So this is kind of a misleading.
Right, I don't know where it was in construction or not. But if it is, what I would say, it looks to me, just looking at the property, it appears to be a very high-quality property. I don't have the specifics in front of me.
Right.
I did not compile these examples. I was only asked people to do that. But I'll be glad to take a look at it after this. This property is in Kill Devil Hills. The 2020 assessed value is 4,49,800. Sale date, March 12th of 2024. Sold for $715,000. Increase of 59%. This property is located in Waves. 2020 assessed value is 4,41,200. Sale date is December 12th of 2024. Sale price, 790,000. Increase of 79%. Properties in Salvo, 2020 assessed value is 597,000. Sale date, September 6th of '24. Sale price, 995,000. Increase of 67%. Properties in Frisco, in 2020, it was assessed for 929,900. Sale date was March 8th of '23. I mean, excuse me, June 8th of '23. Sale price is 1,838,000. Increase is 98%. This property is in Manio. 2020 assessed value is 325,800. Sale date is November 3rd of 2023. Sale price is 574,000. Increase of 74%. Properties, it's actually Manio Outside. 2020 assessed value is 213,400. Sold September 17th of 2024 for 340,000. Increase of 59%. And this property is in Stumpy Point. 2020 assessed is 301,400. Sale date is August 9th of '24. Sale price, 575,000. Increase of 90%. This property is located in Mans Harbor. It sold twice since 2020. The 2020 assessed value, 149,800. Sale date is June 7th, 2021. Sale price is 210,000. Increase is 40%. Sale date, the second sale is March 30th of 2023. Sold for 341,700. Increase of 128% from the 149,800. So those are all examples that I have. But they do show that the area may show a certain percent increase as far as estimate aggregate, but not all properties are in that. Some are below that, some are above that. So we don't want people to assume that just since an area is up a certain percentage that all properties are up that percent. Because we look at all properties. So this article, a friend of mine sent me. Star News Online, and Smart Asset, I'm not that familiar with, but I did look up, look at it a little bit. Just a financial advisor service guide. And their January 8th, 2025 report ranked Dare County as the number one wealthiest student state of North Carolina. Median income, investment income and property value. Median home value showing a 599, 557. I can't really see the other counties on there, but New Hanover is not in there, Currituck is. And, you know, this, you also have to consider the makeup of our properties, too. I mean, we have a large, we have a large group of vacation rental houses that are typically relatively large. And that would have an effect on that. So still, that is interesting. And the next two slides, Donna was gracious enough to let us pirate them for our presentation. I think she presented this last month's board meeting. And these are the median home prices for the years 2020 to 2024. 2020 is, it's difficult to see, is 381,500. And then it goes, and that's indicative of what happened in '21 and '22 after the pandemic. It went to 4, I think it's 466. I can't quite see it, but 462, thank you. And then it went to 569. And then there are more moderate, or modest increases in '23 and '24. And that's exactly what we've seen in our analysis. It's just another way to look at it. And this is also from Dare Community Housing Task Force. Shows the percent increase by year. And if you look from 2020, which is about 12, almost 13%, '21 and '22, I mean, those are, those numbers are unprecedented. So 21%, 23%, and then it slows in '23 and '24. So those are interesting, and our data shows the same thing. So these are other counties that reappraised in '25 in North Carolina. What this shows is that this is not just a phenomenon here. It is all over the state of North Carolina, and I would venture to say is all over the country. I can't speak outside of the country. I don't really do much research, international research, but it wouldn't surprise me. So New Hanover, they're on a four-year cycle. Their increase is projected to be 67%. Johnston County, theirs is 71%. They're on a six-year cycle. Durham is on a six-year cycle. Theirs, 75%. Lenora is an eight-year cycle. Theirs, 73%. Cumberland is also an eight-year cycle. Theirs, 88%. So that's pretty telling, I think. So appraised value versus tax rates. They are two separate components. Our appraisers evaluate market activity to determine appraised value, market value. That's what we're looking for. We're constantly looking for that. The tax rate is determined by Dare County or the municipalities in Dare County based on whatever budgetary needs there are. And that, the appraised value is set January 1st. And the rate is not set until the end of June typically. So they're independent of one another. Tax bill can't be calculated without a tax rate. So we don't know what tax bills will be until that rate is calculated later in the year. So I talked a little bit earlier about appeals. And what do you do if you disagree? We have a three-step process. We would like people to follow a three-step process. Review their parcel information, their characteristics that we have on file for them. We have, on our website, you can do this. People do it every day and say, well, I only have two bathrooms, not three. Over time, properties may change. We may not have building permits for certain things. That does occur. So if you see anything that it does not look correct, like square footage, condition, things like that, that can be reported online, or it can be reported to our office. So, I mean, that would be the first step. Second step is compare your property with sales of other similar properties. And you can also do that on our website. We have tools there to do that. It's very intuitive, user-friendly, I believe. And a lot, you know, it's difficult to say how many people take advantage of that, but I think that is something that would be prudent for someone to do if they were appealing their value. If you're still, you know, if all the characteristics are right and you still don't agree with the value, certainly file an appeal. Anyone can file an appeal. But the question has to be about the value. There's certain reasons that people may appeal that don't have anything to do with value. Property went up 100% from the last reappraisal. That's not a reason to appeal. That will not result in any change in value. I can't pay the tax bill. You don't know what the tax bill is going to be yet. Typically, rates, I'm not going to go into revenue neutral in this meeting, but typically, that is something that taxing jurisdictions look very closely at because you can't operate with a surplus. Then there's the level of service provided. We get that from time to time. Most recent thing I can recall is, why do I have to pay sanitation on my car when I pay it on my house? That's a good question. But I ask the question, do you accumulate refuse in your car that you in turn throw into your trash can? I would say, yeah. So I think it does pertain. But that's just an example. I mean, I understand the concerns. But the only thing we can, we can address is the market value. We can't address those concerns. So when we mail the revaluation notices to all property owners, the informal appeal process, now this is not statutorily defined. There's nothing in the statutes that talk about informal appeals. But it's prudent, and I would venture to say that every county in North Carolina practices this because our office can change values on properties if there is a valid reason to do so before the Board of Equalization and Review convenes. And I'll talk a little bit about that board in a minute. But the notice serves as an informal appeal form as well. It has the value and the property, it doesn't have the characteristics, but it has the property value. But it is also a tear-off appeal form that you can fill out and mail in or bring to the office. These can be submitted online, by mail, or in person. And it continues, this process continues up until the Board of Equalization and Review convenes. Well, by law, the Board of Equalization and Review must convene between the first Monday in April and the first Monday in May. And once they convene, our office cannot change any value. Now, we can recommend changes to the board, and that's typically what we do. We work appeals once the notices are sent. That process is not new. That's our value notice form for 2025. It does not have the top portion because we couldn't fit it on the slide, but that is the actual appeal form. And it asks for information, and that's what we need. We need information because maybe your information's better than mine. I mean, I would venture to say in some cases it might be, but in most cases, it's probably not. But that's what it looks like. And that's, that will be part of the appeal notice form when it is mailed at the end of the month. So the Board of Equalization and Review is a five-member county-appointed board. It is statutorily required. Every county must have one. In a lot of counties, the Board of Commissioners serves as that board. Usually, those are smaller counties, but not in every case. Larger counties have multiple Boards of Equalization and Review. Wake County, I'm not sure how many Wake has, but I mean, you consider the number of parcels they have, and they have quite a few appeals to deal with. And it, this board hears and decides on any appeal received after the informal process is concluded. And typically, they will adjourn within 30 days after they convene for the purpose of accepting appeal requests. They will continue to hear appeals in a revaluation year up until the end of the calendar year typically. Our board, just for your information, there's a, it's a five-member board. The current board has served since I started 10 years ago. There's three real estate agents, all very experienced, a builder and an attorney. So that's who serves on this board. So, you know, they specialize in this type of business. And that's helpful. And they understand their mission and what they need to do. Supporting your appeal. You got to have credible evidence to refute what we have. So, and what that could be is comparable sales from anywhere. You know, maybe a house sold down the street. My neighbor's house is sold right here. That's fine. It can be a CMA by a real estate agent. It can be a PDF printed from our comparable sales tool that we have online. It doesn't need to be anything fancy or anything like that. Pictures showing the property's interior. Or if there's certain exterior features that we may have missed, images are very important. We, you know, that's why we use the updated imagery. And, you know, the new street-level imagery is to have current images of properties. So we would certainly consider that. I mean, in our analysis, we typically don't go inside properties. Well, we do when they're being constructed, but we really don't go to inside them after that. We're not like a fee appraiser. So in most cases, the exterior, you would assume that if the exterior is a certain condition, that the interior would be the same. But that's not always the case. And we understand that, and we need to know that. Obviously, a recent fee appraisal is as good of information for an appeal as you can have. So if you have one, great. Send it in if you disagree. We'll certainly consider it, depending on the purpose of the appraisal. Just to follow up the other slide. You know, if you see things that are wrong, whether it be square footage, the condition, or the, you know, anything with the characteristics of the property online, we just need to know that. And we can adjust those to accurately depict what the property actually is. And that's what we want to do. But appeals have to be based on value, not change in value or what the anticipated tax increase may be. So, you know, when I, when I talk to people about appealing, I'm saying, don't talk about taxes because that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about value. And we try to advise people that way. So these are some key dates. Obviously, Obviously, the effective date is January 1, 2025. We will mail notices by the end of this month. Board of Equalization will convene between April 7th and May 5th. And then the deadline to submit a real property appeal is 30 days from when they convene. So, I mean, that's, that's very concise. And then the tax bills, we typically, we typically bill in August, and those will go, you know, when we do that, they will reflect the 2025 values. This is, this is our revaluation webpage dedicated to this particular revaluation. It has a timeline, the schedule of values, parcel data verification, comparable sales tools, appeal information, online appeal form, and contact information. And that's my contact information there. That's the last of my slides. One thing I will offer is that, I was reading an article on Durham County's revaluation. They mailed notices last week, I think. And we intend to have informational meetings set up in different areas where people can come and ask questions in an informal environment and talk to an appraiser and look at sales and look at how we arrived at that value to see if they want to appeal or not, because they may not know or they may not be able to go on our website and, and use, we certainly recognize that there are those that might not be able to do that. So we don't have a schedule for that set at this point, but that is something that we will be doing. So all that said, I know that's a lot of information. I'd be happy to entertain any questions anybody might have.
Thank you. It's certainly a lot of work going into this. Our yield to my fellow commissioners is if they have any questions. Sounds like you've answered all their questions and concerns.
Well, if anyone has any questions, all you need to do is call me.
Absolutely.
Or email me or whatever, or anybody for that matter. Because we're here, we want to make this process understandable. Because when you don't understand things, you're scared of them, and I understand that. So that's what we're here for. So thank you very much for your time this morning. I really appreciate it. Appreciate all the work that's gone into that, and everybody will be receiving notices sometime at the end of this month.
Thank you, Jose. Appreciate you.
Mm-hmm.
County manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item seven on the agenda. This is a presentation by Chuck Wasit for the Dare County Health and Human Services Local Fatality Team.
Good morning.
Welcome, Chuck. Good to see you.
This morning, I wanted to talk to you about the, what we are transitioning to as a local fatality team. Currently, in 100 counties across North Carolina, each county has two teams of diverse professions who review all child fatalities. There we go. And they're broken down. I'm going to give you a little bit of history. I'm going to talk to you about where we're going, and then I have a, three requests from the Board of Commissioners today. The Community Child Protection Team is a team that serves child welfare in North Carolina. This team was created in 1991 by statute, and its purpose is to look at child fatalities that are involving child abuse or severe child neglect cases that, that could result in fatality and to make recommendations locally or at the state level of changes that need to be made in the system. The Child Fatality Prevention Team is on the health side. This was created in 1993, and they look at all the child fatalities that happened, irregardless of why the child died. So it may be from birth defects, it may be due to a fire, maybe due to an automobile accident. Dare County combined both of these teams about 25 years ago, and we've been operating as a single team since then. The other thing that currently exists is the, the CFPT reports this information to a statewide database, and the state collects this information. As a result of the 2023 Appropriations Act, the General Assembly is changing how we do these reviews. They've consolidated it, these two teams into one team, like, pretty much like what Dare County's been doing, and this one team will be known as the local team. That name really doesn't describe what we do, so we're going to call our team the local fatality team. We were originally scheduled to begin in January 2025. That was pushed off by the General Assembly this past fall, and we will begin the local team, local fatality team in July. One of the things I will be asked, I ask of you today is, do we in Dare County want to operate as a single team or a multi-county team? Part of the legislation asks that the Board of Commissioners consult with the Health Department Director and the Social Services Director to make this decision. Dr. Davies and I have talked about this extensively. Dare County has a small number of fatalities that we review. We are not part of a regional health department, much like Terrell and Currituck are, and our recommendation to you would be that we follow a, a single-county local fatality team. The other part of this change that will occur is that once a fatality is reviewed, that information will be entered into a national database, and that'll help not only the state look at what the numbers are in the state, but also compare them to other states nationally because it's all part of the same database. So what type of fatalities?
Can I ask you a quick question about that?
Sure.
What would be the pros or cons of doing it separate or together?
So.
I'm just.
If you're already part of a regional plan or a regional, let's say, health department, it would make more sense if you reviewed all the fatalities in your region together. Currituck is part of the Almark Region, and their health department, and then Terrell is part of Terrell, Martin, and Washington. So we're not part of any, any region. They're, they already have the, the established region, so that would be the reason for they, for them doing a multi-county. The fatal, the new local team will be reviewing these, these listed fatalities rather than reviewing every child fatality, they will only review the specific ones. We're still waiting for guidance on some of these, but this is what the local team will be doing. This slide shows the composition of the local team. One of the major changes that has occurred is, in the past, the Board of Commissioners was, were able to select and appoint five individuals to serve as at-large members. Those at-large members were moved with the local team, and they, if we need to pull in professions that are not represented here to review certain fatalities, we can pull them together as an ad hoc team. You will see two of them, two of the members have asterisks at the end of them, an emergency medical services provider or firefighter, and then a parent of a child who died before reaching the child's 18th birthday. As part of the request today, I will be asking that you appoint those two individuals to the local fatality team as of July 1. So what is the ask for today? In your consent agenda, there is the 2024 Dare County CFPT/CCPT report, and I would request that you approve that report. Number two is to make a decision if, as to whether or not Dare County will use a single team or a multi-county team. And the third request would be to appoint Captain Stephen Barrett from EMS and best story, a parent who's lost a child before the age of 18, to the local team. Any questions?
Would there be any questions for Chuck?
That'd be the case, and then I'll ask the pleasure of the board of his request.
Make the motion to set up a county, a single county team for the committee.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Commissioner Balance. Floor is open for discussion.
Do we also need a motion to appoint the two individuals also?
You, can we, can we do this all in one? We can?
Yes.
All right. I'll go back to the maker of the motion.
Yeah, that was going to be my next motion. I wanted to make sure we had the committee set up before I pointed somebody to it, but if we can do it all at one time, that's great.
Okay. Will you restate the motion then to include?
Restating the motion, make the motion to have a single county team and to appoint Captain Stephen Barrett from EMS and best story as a parent on that committee.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Once again, the floor is open for further discussion here. Is there any? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, say? No sign carriers unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
We're here to move forward to the next one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That brings us to item eight. This is a EMS hospital transport planning presentation. Ronnie Sloan's here, and Jenny Collins is here as well. If y'all would come up, I don't know whether they're going to have questions that I can't answer, but come up and help me with this. I'm going to make the presentation, and then if you have questions, then we'll talk about that. There is no action for you all to take today. This is really just to report out. You have, thank you all for coming. You have in your packet a Dare County EMS inter-facility transport sustainability project report that was done by a consulting firm that, that does these kind of things. And we're here because we're a victim of our success. In Dare County, we're fortunate to have a hospital that started out small and has become much larger. They provide a lot of things in the county that we didn't have years ago when our EMS programs began, and they've become big and they do a lot of things. They've got cardiology, and they've got orthopedics, and they've got all kinds of things, and they've got other things coming. And so what their needs are and what the county's needs are and the county medical needs have grown over time because of what the hospital has done and made available here. Similarly, our population has grown and our need for our EMS services has grown, and our EMS system has grown, and we have a very modern, up-to-date, I would say, one of the best, if not the best EMS services in the state. And again, that's a part, product of our success as well. And so those successes and that growth have led us to a point where we've got some issues between, not issues, we've got some things that need to be addressed between the hospital and EMS service to make sure that we do things the right way going forward. I'm going to give you a little background. First of all, EMS, counties are required to provide EMS, and EMS is required to provide the 911 service. And that's really our only responsibility is to provide the 911 services. It's been our responsibility, it's been our priority for years, and nothing that we're talking about changes any of that. So the things that we're talking about now don't have anything to do with when you dial 911, whether the ambulance shows up or not. That goes on as before. Nothing changes. There are no issues. We're, we've got that, and that's not what this is about. The hospital is responsible for inter-facility transports, and those are the transports that, once they get to the hospital, where do they go? You know, they, they, they get transported for a number of reasons. You know, they get transported because they don't have beds to put them in. They get transported because they need a higher or lower level of care than the hospital needs. They get transported because the doctor says they need to be somewhere else. And so the question becomes, how do you get them there? Who does it? How do you get reimbursed for those costs? What are we going to do? Historically, we didn't have a hospital, and we had an EMS service, and everything had to be transported out of the county once they got stabilized. So because we didn't have a hospital, we provided both the 911's calls and the transport calls because there was no other way to do that. Our citizens needed to be transported. There wasn't a service to do that. There wasn't a hospital to deal with the patients. And so we had to get them somewhere after that we, we got them stabilizing and had them in a position they could be moved. And so we did that as a service to our community, and that was part of the money that you all put into the EMS service. I may say it again in the, in the presentation, but EMS services don't pay for themselves. Anybody that thinks that, you know, the subsidy or not the subsidy, the reimbursements that we get from Medicare or Medicaid or Blue Cross or any of the other providers covers the cost to provide the service, they're wrong. You all put money out of general fund into that on top of those revenues that we receive every year. And so that's a service that we have to provide. That's part of what the tax base is for. That's why we, we have it because we have to have it, and so you have to fund it. As the hospital came in the beginning, the transports were not a problem. We continued with that historic practice of us doing the transports, moving them out of the hospital to where they needed to go. And at the volume that the hospital did their work and at the volume that we had 911 calls, that did not present any problems for us. And for years and years and years, that has been what we've done over time. It's been a great partnership. Still a great partnership. It has worked very well, both for the hospital and for the citizens of Dare County. And so what we've got now is we've got another growth issue that we have to tackle somehow, and that's going to take some more working together in that partnership that we have with the hospital. Where we are now is we have, I guess, kind of two issues. One of the issues is a payer issue, and that is, how do we maximize the revenues that we get so that we can provide the transportation services that we, that the hospital needs? We have a difficult time meeting our, we're at a place where we have a difficult time meeting our 911 responsibilities and then helping the hospital at the same time meet their inter-facility transport responsibilities. On top of that, the payer rules have become so complicated, you know, that you code something wrong, you have a small discrepancy between maybe what our record says and what the nurse's record at the hospital says. Any little thing like that gets kicked back. You know, the doctor can say that we need a transport to so-and-so, and we make the transport, and then the payer will go back and say, well, I don't think you needed that transport, and all of a sudden, we don't get paid. And so we've got to find a way to do that because we can't continue to sustain what we're doing if we're leaving those dollars on the table. And so what we had to do is figure out kind of where the problems were and start looking at how to address those kind of problems. The second problem that we have to address together is a resource problem. We're getting to a place now with the number of 911 calls we had that we don't have trucks or people available to do the transports that meet the growth needs of the hospital. And so without additional resources, we can't meet their needs, and we can't make those transports that they need to keep their emergency room going and to take care of the people in our county. And so what can we do about that? We looked at how to do it. We had some trouble identifying some of it, and so the report that you have was our effort to get somebody from the outside to come in and help us sort of frame the discussion and think about ways to resolve these problems. We want to help the hospital all that we can. It's a critical part of our community. It's important to our citizens, and so we want to do everything we can do to help them. Similarly, the hospital is in the same place that we are. They want to do everything to take care of the citizens in our community and to help EMS because they need us as well, and we are a large part of what they do as well. So we began working on this problem even before we got the report and, and started looking at a number of issues and, and, and those kind of things. And so where we found ourselves is sort of a, when do we transport? When, when are the criteria met that we do in fact transport? And then how do we maximize the payments that we get to, to make those transports? That's like issue one. And then issue two is what does it take to meet the long-term needs of the hospital and the community? and the community, uh, going forward and what resources does that, does that require? There have been a lot of discussions about that, a lot of meetings about that on the first issue about when to transport and when, how to maximize payments. We began meeting on that issue even before the report came out. The report has helped us again frame some of the questions, frame some of the issues, but a lot of that work, uh, had begun and I'm happy to say that a lot of the solutions to that are now in the works. What we found was there were some problems with software talking to each other and access to software. And again, no one really knew why or what or how that problem was there until we started digging in deep to try to figure out how to solve some of these problems. And we found that to be one of the problems and the hospital and their team have worked really hard to try to get their software to where it can be used properly by us and by them and, and that will solve a number of the problems. The second remedies in, in those areas are, are protocols. These are protocols that both our staff and the hospital's staff use as a checklist, if you will, to be sure that we meet all the payer requirements so that when the hospital comes in and says, we need a transport, then we can look at the protocol and say, yes, we're gonna transport that because we know we're gonna get paid for that. If it doesn't meet that protocol, then it's not eligible for an ambulance transport. That, that's a transport by some other method. Everybody who comes into the emergency room or comes into the hospital doesn't need an ambulance transport. They can be transported by family, they can be transported by a cab, they can be transported by a number of other things. And we shouldn't be using the ambulances and those resources to provide transportation services that aren't necessary for medical reasons. Those transports can be made in some other way. And so the staff has worked up those protocols, they're going through the processes now of getting approved by the hospital boards, make sure that we're all on the same page and to get those implemented. The, 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 what, the transports that have been rejected for non-payment have begun decreasing, uh, that's getting better and we think that when we get these final protocols in place that we'll even get that down, uh, to better. There's always gonna be one or two or some percent, but we wanna get that down to a minimum. The second issue, and so I guess that what I'm getting at is the first issue is well underway to be resolved and will get resolved and it won't take any action by you all, I tell you all that because getting that payer stuff down increases the dollars that we get in. Getting those dollars in helps to solve some of issue two, which is a resource problem on how do we sustain the transports going forward? So they are interrelated, uh, we think we're at a place where the first issue is at or about resolution. There's no action you have to take for those resolutions, that's all protocols, timing, communicating, getting everybody on the same page and we've come a long ways to do that already. The second thing is, what it's, it take for us to meet, what does it take for us or somebody else to meet the needs of the hospital? When the patient gets to the hospital and has to be moved for whatever one of those reasons it is, what resources are needed to do that? How much does it cost to do that? And where do those resources come from? And so where we are is, we don't have resources right now to do it and, at the current levels and at the current growth levels. And the responsibility to provide those inter-facility transports is not Dare County's or the Dare County taxpayers. And so where we are on that issue is, we're working with the hospital to figure out the best, the most efficient and the most economical way to do that. That could be that we continue to do it and the hospital provides added resources to allow us to do that. That could be that the hospital looks at whether there's ways to contract that out. That could be that the hospital uses their own transportation system. That could be a combination of all of those things. Those are, are financial things and those are things that our team are going through, our dollars to get our costs, to see what it takes us to do that so that the hospital will have some numbers to evaluate going forward. And the hospital team is working on their end at the same time to figure out what's the most efficient way for them, uh, to do that as well. When we have those numbers together, we'll sit down as a team with our committees and, and have some discussions and, and work on, okay, what does that mean? What is that plan? How does that fit in the recommendations? It might be a hybrid of the recommendations that are in the report, I'm not sure where that'll take us. But the goal is to make sure that if Dare County's gonna do what, we have the resources to be able to do that without burdening the taxpayers further. And the goal for the hospital is, is to make sure that they can move the patients where they need to be moved efficiently and timely and cost-effectively for the patient so that they can continue to operate the hospital efficiently, run the emergency room efficiently and, and take care of our citizens efficiently. And, and so all of our goals align and, and we, the, it's not an adversarial approach. It, it is very much a collegial approach and we have worked very hard together, um, to try to come up with those solutions and we're making progress on those things. I'm not sure what else to add to that. Again, a lot of that work is, has been done, is being done. That report that you have is a snapshot in time. You know, some of the things are observations that were made that day that when you go back and look deeper, may or may not be correct because they, you know, they alerted us to something, we went back and we looked and said, oh, well, that didn't happen that way, we can do it this way. So it has been very helpful to us to look at issues, some of the issues that were in fact issues we've corrected, some of the issues that pointed out when you dig deeper weren't really issues. And so with it all, it's given us a good place to work with the hospital and we're getting close to resolving those issues. In the long-term transportation thing, you will have to make a decision at some point in the future on whatever the plan is to fund future transportation, our role in that funding, the hospital's role in that funding, if we're gonna play a role. Or if, you know, whatever comes out of that isn't something that's palatable to us, then you'll have to make a decision that, you know, what are we gonna do, uh, with regard to transports in the future? So that's why we have the report, that's the discussions that's been, that have been going on. Those discussions have been very good, they've been very helpful. And we're both, the hospital and Dare County are pushing in the same direction to get the same results. And so with that, I'll stop. If you have questions of me, then, um, I'm glad to answer them. Ronnie, you're here, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, maybe just a few, uh, just-
Sure.
A quick comment, uh, just talking and thinking, I wanna thank Bobby Outten, I wanna thank Chief Collins and her team, I wanna thank the hospitals team, everybody's working together really, really hard, as you say, the last, uh, almost year now. Also, remind you, we have a long history of working together, as Bobby said, with the county and we've had a great history to truly improve care and wellness and health and wellbeing of our community. You know, uh, you know, since 2013, can we help these assess that we work in conjunction with and it helped create great things like the Community Care Clinic of Dare, like the dementia-friendly task force, which has now turned to its own 501(c)(3), which fortunately enough because of that work, we had the governor that came down and awarded us as the first hospital in the state to be dementia-friendly as well, so that was great work. We work with the Breast Cancer Early Detection Program, with the county to prevent, uh, T2 diabetes program. Of course, the COVID response, we were lockstep, literally daily double meeting some days through the whole entire ordeal that we went through. We sometimes share OB providers as needed when we have needs in the county or in the hospital. The Mother's Valley Programs, uh, Dr. Davies and I co-chair the Access to Healthcare Task Force in the community as well. Done the recent Blue Zones assessment work within the county, um, hand in hand as well. Of course, the walk-in health and wellness clinic for the team members within Dare County employee as well. And, uh, but perhaps the oldest partnership that goes back to 2002, March 19th, is probably the first visit that you made to the hospital to pick up our first patient and take them somewhere. So, uh, you know, healthcare, we're always in a state of process improvement and, uh, I'm, I'm committed and the hospital's committed to continue this work with Dare County, looking at specifically inter-facility transfers to make sure we do the best thing and keep our community safe, our patients and our visitors safe in the community. So that's, I just wanted to say thanks for the relationship and let you know personally that we're totally committed to doing what's right by our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Did you have anything to add, Jenny?
No.
Questions? Any questions? We got the people here that can answer them if you have questions.
Board have any questions?
Just got a couple of comments. For one, I wanna commend, uh, our staff for reaching out to Paige Wolf, Wolfburg and Worth. They are the leading consultants in EMS. I've had the absolute honor of working with James O. Page when he was the North County Director for EMS. A little bit further into his background, he was one of the original paramedics in LA County. And, uh, he was, uh, one of the writers and technical consultant for the TV show Emergency and gained his law degree before he became a paramedic and helped get the, uh, paramedic program started in, in Los Angeles County and had across, across the United States. And North Carolina was lucky to, uh, get him for a few years, uh, as a EMS director for the state and I was privileged and honored to work under, underneath him for a few years during, during that time. And, uh, I've read through this, uh, their findings, uh, on their report and, uh, found a lot of good things in there. Some of the things in there, I've, I've tried in the past, uh, when I first, uh, got out of EMS, I looked into doing a, uh, a transportation situation from inter-hospital stuff. And even at that time, it was not gonna be feasible, uh, financially. And so, uh, I kinda let that go off and, uh, Dare County EMS, EMS has been doing a wonderful job in it. Is there a problem with, with inter, uh, department, inter-facility transports? Absolutely. I can't tell you how many times when I was with EMS, I would be sitting at Wellbone Junction being the only available ambulance in the whole county. And I know we have, have had that in a couple of times recently, but for a long period of time, it was been, it's been better worked out so we have more than, more than those because we have more units on the road now. The one thing that Mr. Outten you brought up was one of the things that they were talking about with inter, inter-transfers, that if the patient didn't, didn't need a, an ambulance, that they could actually, you know, the family member could take them on their own car. And I'm worried about that with the fact of wouldn't it, at that time, the hospital would have to sign that patient out AMA? Cause they're not under medical control.
So there's a protocol that talks about when you can use an ambulance transport? And if they meet that protocol, then you can have an ambulance transport and you get reimbursed for that. If they don't meet that protocol and you transport, then there is no reimbursement for that. And so the question becomes for the hospital is, when they're looking for that transport that doesn't meet that protocol, what's the most cost-effective way to do that? If they're gonna ask us to do it, then are they gonna be the payer of last resort? And are they gonna put that patient in a position where they've gotta pay for an ambulance ride when they're eligible for some other ride that doesn't cost so much? And so that's a decision that would be made at the hospital level unless we're gonna provide that at no cost and we eat the cost of those types of things. One of the reasons that we're here is because that is what we're doing now. We're eating those costs and so we're leaving a lot of money on the table and, and the taxpayers are, are paying for that and it's not sustainable at the current growth levels of both the 911 side as well as the growth levels of the hospital. And that's, as I started, we're a victim of our success, that's a good thing, the hospital's doing great things as a groans, but with that comes these kind of problems that we didn't have in 10 years ago. And so now we've got to together find a way to solve them. Working with the hospital together, the problem you just described, we'll figure that out. They'll say, here's what we'd like to do, what can you do, what can they do? How does that work? And then when we come back, we'll have a plan for you all to say, here's what we wanna do, here's what our cost is, if any, are you okay with it? Sure.
Commissioner House, I, I, I hear your concern. When the transport is medically necessary and there is a process to go through that, there's no question that we're not gonna, um, the hospital's not gonna discharge that patient AMA just to put them in a family vehicle. The issue, this covers a wide variety of things. So patient, um, is treated and needs to go home and it's 1:00 AM and they don't wanna call their family to wake them up to come get them, they want an ambulance to take them home. There's no medical reason that that patient be transported by an ambulance. They, they don't need any medical care, they just need a ride. And I think that's more of the issue that, um, was spoken, that there are alternatives to those types of transports to not land in an ambulance. And that patient be looking at three, four, $500 bill depending on where their home is versus Uber or family, you know, coming to get them because there's no medical necessity that they go by ambulance. So there's a difference there in those transports. Does that make sense?
I realize about taking them home, I'm thinking, you know, if, if the hospital here said they needed to go to Chesapeake, but it wasn't, didn't meet the criteria-
If they need to go to Chesapeake Hospital, there's a medical reason for them to do that and that's not the, the issue here. There's emergent, there's non-emergent, there's a, there's a whole menu of things that come into play from that and the documentation that's needed for that. But from hospital to nursing home doesn't always require an ambulance. Hospital to assisted living facility doesn't necessarily require an ambulance. And so this report looks at the totality of those transports, not only from hospital to hospital, but to those other care, um, or other environments too.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify the statement that-
Yeah, and the, the protocols that I described take the medical necessity into account. That is what the protocol is to determine that medical necessity.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I, I want one of Jenny, uh, Bobby, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Jenny, we're, we're not in a position there where when we're transporting to Greenville or Chesapeake or whatever, we've got enough staff to, to, um, cover the county and, and you move people around. We're not in a situation where we got one ambulance, uh, trying to respond to issues. Don't we have enough personnel to, to take care of the county? Uh, I'm concerned about what commi, Vice Chairman said about, um, having only one vehicle available to answer calls. You shift enough around to cover the county, right?
Yes, and I'm gonna qualify that, that, um, eight years ago, working in conjunction with, with the Board of Commissioners, we put a staffing plan in place to increase the number of units that we have staffed. And every year, we have chunked for your, for the support that we receive from the board, have placed other units in service. I think, um, at the, the time that I came in nine years ago, we were at eight units being staffed today, we are now up to 12. That original staffing plan took us to, um, a vision of having 13 units to address all the 911 needs. Are there times during the summer and other times where we have major incidents going on? We have a number of units that make us nervous, um, absolutely. And that's restricting the number of units that, that are going out of the county. Are we at one? No. You know, cause we have worked very hard to increase the, the staffing across. There are times that we are posting a single unit through multiple districts, um, but that may be, you know, the north area, for example, or down south below Oregon inlet. And we're, we're moving, but our geography is our biggest challenge. It takes time. As calls go out, we immediately start moving units so that we can maintain a coverage. Doing the inter-facility transport takes units out of that deployment to be able to do that. But- But in the, you know, the time that I think Commissioner House is talking about was back when we had those few numbers, before the staffing plan went into effect.
Got you. Thank you.
That issue, Mr. Chairman, is what we're trying to prevent. The purpose of this is recognizing where we're headed, recognizing what our statistics are showing us now, and making sure that we've planned and we don't fall into the situation that Commissioner House spoke of that happened years ago. So, that's the whole point of what we're doing.
I'd like to add, you know, in reading through the report, there were several incidents where the EMS staff spoke with the firm and expressed their concerns with, one thing was with, from interviews with DCEMS staff, there have been multiple times when they received inaccurate information about a patient's condition. I'm not getting into the specifics on that, but for them to feel comfortable says a lot about, to be able to say those things. Second, I want to say, our responsibility is, I want to make sure that our staff is taken care of. I'm worried about them going on long hauls on a 24-hour and get back and have to go to a long haul somewhere else before their 24-hour shift is done. I hope that there's protocols in place that there's not multiple trucks going on long hauls in the same shift. But if they're going on these long hauls in the middle of the night, whatever, are they rested well enough? Are they, is there enough staff to cover the trucks? Not just that there's enough trucks, but that the staff is equipped physically to be able to cover that. Because I'm a firm believer, if mama ain't happy, ain't nobody happy. It's a trickle-down thing. If we don't take care of them, they can't take care of the patients. So, I just feel like we need to make sure that that piece of this puzzle is additionally addressed.
I'll let Jenny speak to it if she'd like, but I'll tell you that she, we do have protocols and she does have for safety. We're not putting anybody at unnecessary risk. One of the issues we are trying to address is the timing of when the transports occur. If you have a person that has a stroke or heart attack and they need to be transported, they need to be transported right now. If it's 3:00 in the morning or not, they got to go. If you have somebody that isn't in critical care, isn't, doesn't need to be transported immediately, then we can wait until the sun comes up so that we're not dodging the deers and the bears and having the staff out all night. Temper that with the needs of the hospital. The hospital has to get somebody to where there's a bed available. If they have somebody that comes in that needs to have surgery at 11:00 in Greenville, then we may have to go sooner than we would like to go to get them there so that they could meet a surgery schedule. So, there's a balance that have to go there. To your first question, that's a communication issue with where staff and both staffs aren't communicating correctly about a condition of a patient. And the protocols that we're doing and what we're doing as between staffs are to solve those problems. That same communication protocol, those same discussions that we're making happen now will also solve the problem I just described, because if we know that they've got to have surgery at 10:00 in the morning, then we know we've got to do something and we do it. If we don't know that, then we're pushing back and saying, why are we doing this at 2:00 in the morning and putting everybody at risk when the patient's stable, there's no critical care needs and so on? So, again, communication solves a lot of this stuff. And those protocols we're putting in place will help us solve those problems. And Jenny, I don't know if you needed to add to that?
It's a great question and thank you for, you know, caring about the staff. That is absolutely my concern, as well as the condition of the patient and the hospital, because our business is saving lives. And we do want to move, any type of life-threatening thing, we're going to move 24 hours a day and it doesn't, it doesn't matter because that person needs to get to the right care. It is more, as Bobby was saying, the non-emergent that absolutely have a reason to go to a higher level of care, but do they need to go at 2:00 AM or can we move that at 6:00 AM? You know, to your question, that's one of the major functions of our operations officer who track everything, every movement of every unit and who's doing it. And we do spread this because we deploy this in a intermix with our 911 resources. Those long hauls are spread across multiple units. So, that is our goal, to never send a unit on more than one in a 24-hour. And if that unit's been very busy during their 24-hour shift, we're looking at other resources. And we do have things, you know, that's in accordance with national standards as far as, you know, rest time and access to caffeinated, you know, products and things like that to help with the fatigue issue. But your question is very valid because you are fighting the normal circadian rhythm of humans. And we are, we have asked the hospital for their assistance in that, but if the physician says it needs to go now, then we look at those resources. But we are spreading that across multiple units. But that is one of the issues with this study and our partnership with them is being able to look at, we need some resources that one, are maybe on a different shift schedule and two, that, you know, they have needs also.
Yes.
They don't want an emergency waiting room full of patients that can't get in the back to be seen either. And so, it is a balancing act and it is a communication issue.
Thank you.
Jenny?
And I'll add to that. The attitude with the discussion is, help us help you. We're with them saying, how can we, how can you help us help you? And they're coming to us, how can we help you help us? And so, we're both coming at this from the same direction. The hospital doesn't want us transporting at unsafe times either, so.
And my point mainly is that the morale of our EMS workers is extremely important and needs to be part of the solution.
Hope the answer's zero. How many vehicle accidents have we had in the last 10 years due to driver fatigue?
Due to driver fatigue alone, in my tenure here, which has been nine years now, we have not had any to fatigue.
Thank you. I mean, accidents can happen. I mean, whether another driver at fault, I'm wondering our own drivers. And I'm glad to hear none.
And I am hopeful that, one, our staff are empowered to speak up if they think they are too fatigued to be able to do that. And the other risk strategies that we've put in place for fatigue. I can't avoid that we've hit, if it's got four legs, we have, and runs out in front of you in the road at night.
No, I understand. That's part of, part of living. I was worried that there might, I suspected zero, I was hoping zero, and it's zero.
Yes. The county does have a history, though, prior to me, of that particular issue. So.
Other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let me take a five-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, item nine on the agenda is a resolution honoring Wilbur Wright on his birthdate and the vital cultural and economic contributions of the Wright Brothers to the enduring first-flight legacy in Dare County. And Dorothy, has your name by that? Do you have anything to add to that? Or just like me to read the resolution?
I'll just read the resolution.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, this is a resolution that the First Flight Society had asked if we could present. And they were the ones that actually kind of wrote everything up, so county manager, if you will?
Sure. This is a resolution honoring Wilbur Wright on his birthdate and the vital cultural and economic contributions of the Wright Brothers to the first-in-flight legacy of Dare County in North Carolina. Whereas Wilbur Wright's birthdate of April 16th, 1867, is recognized and celebrated annually at the Wright Brothers National Memorial in Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina, in Dare County schools and by the First Flight Society and its mission to honor the Wright Brothers for their first-powered flight and to promote aviation in Dare County, North Carolina, the United States and the world. And whereas Wilbur Wright, Orville Wright, Catherine Wright, Haskell and the Wright family are considered to be among Dare County's best-loved and most appreciated ambassadors, an acknowledgement of Wilbur's dedication to erase the initial widespread doubt surrounding aviation and simultaneously becoming a celebrity, earning respect and acceptance from royalty and European society elites with his intellectual prowess, engineering skills, quick wit, friendly disposition and humble nature. And whereas the Wright Brothers National Memorial occupies a distinguished and prominent place on Dare County's renowned official county seal and in reference and support of Dare County's Land of Beginnings tagline. And whereas the Wright Brothers National Memorial hosts 500,000 visitors each year to Dare County with a financial impact of approximately $5 million and a cumulative benefit to North Carolina's economy of nearly $45 million annually, according to peer-reviewed visitor spending analysis by local, state and federal economists. And whereas Dare County in North Carolina share with the great state of Ohio an inseparable bond nurtured and sustained by the historic achievements of the Wright Brothers and the upcoming 125th anniversary commemoration of powered flight in 2028, highlighted by the Wright Route, a partnership between the states of Indiana, Ohio, Virginia and North Carolina. Therefore, being resolved, the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledges Wilbur Wright's birthdate on April 16th and the enduring accomplishments of the Wright Brothers and their significant social, cultural and economic impacts and undertakes to further support National Aviation Day in August and the Wright Route in 2028 by every and all means possible. The Dare County Board of Commissioners furthermore urges the Outer Banks municipalities and the great state of North Carolina to acknowledge and undertake the same this third day of March 2025.
I think a motion to adopt.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair, seconded by.
Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, item 10 on the agenda are resolutions approving various financial terms. I'd like Dave to present those to you.
Okay. These are all items that you had in your annual budget and then the annual capital improvements plan. The first set of bids we took were for 13 sheriff vehicles, three ambulances and nine other vehicles for $2.2 million. We actually got 11 responses. We've only been getting four or five in the last three, four, five years.
Wow.
Low bid was Bank of America Public Capital Corp. at $394, which is B of A, has won our last four or five financings. We budgeted 4% in the budget. Then the public works equipment is three trash trucks and one roll-off truck from the capital improvements plan for $1,453. And that was B of A also at a $396. So, there's, we have a master debt agreement with B of A, so these are just asking you to approve the resolutions, which authorize us to enter into another financing, I think they call them orders, but it's just to add on to the master agreement.
So moved on, oop, might jump in the gun, Mr. Chair.
No.
So moved on both resolutions to approve the financing with Bank of America.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross. Is there a second?
Second, both of them.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, item 11 is an NCDIT Protect Grant Program, and they're seeking a letter of support. They're currently working on a grant program to complete a 25% design and national policy, National Environmental Policy Act for improvements to the ferry facilities and NC-12 that support the Hatters Oakley Cove Ferry Service. The project aims to enhance the long-term resolution of surface transportation operations on Oakley Cove Island and addresses challenges related to erosion, shoaling and sea level rise that threaten the viability of that service. There's a letter in your packet to be signed by the chairman if you all approve. And so, it's before you for your approval and authorization for the chairman to sign.
Motion to approve the letter of support and authorize the chairman to sign.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 12 on the agenda is the Dare County Phase III Construction Management at Risk selection. Dustin, would you like to come up and present that, please?
Good morning, Dustin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. This item in front of you is related to the Phase III new construction projects. The CIP committee met in February to evaluate the responses that we received from an RFQ we had put out. The projects include a public works in Manio, another one in Buxton, EMS in Naggs Head and EMS station Waves, as well as a sheriff CID evidence building. We received proposals from Whiting Turner, Sussex, AR Cheston and Barn Hill. At the conclusion of that meeting, it was determined that Barn Hill was the choice to be our next CM at Risk. And what I'm asking the board to do today is to authorize the county manager to sign and negotiate the contracts with Barn Hill to keep those moving along.
Okay. Any questions? Pleasure of the board.
Making a motion to approve Barn Hill as a contract from manager and authorize county manager to sign and negotiate their contracts.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Chairman, item 13 on your agenda is a decision that we have to make on the use of or demolition of the old probation office. If you don't know where that is, on Highway 64, right behind Cooperative Extension, there's a small red brick building. Years and years ago, it was the Health Department. It's been a number of things over time. But it's a really, really old building. It's right on 64, if you, just right behind Cooperative Extension, just as you go through the stoplight there with the Cooperative Extension, where the, you know, where the tire place is there. And you go through that intersection.
Where the one-way street comes out to a stoplight.
It's on the same site as that. They share parking, the Cooperative Extension and that building share parking on that site. We had mold issues in that building and in the process of trying to resolve the mold issue, we began taking the building apart. And the more we took it apart, the more problems that we found. The long and the short of it is, is that the building sits in an area where the ground underneath it is moist a lot of the time. And to solve the mold issues, one, you've got to do something about that moisture or put the barriers in or do the things you've got to do. And two, you're going to have to refurbish the whole building and that would include a new roof and some other things. The cost to repair that building is going to be something short of $500,000, $450,000 to $475,000 to come in and repair, replace the floors, the walls, put a new roof on and all those things. We had used it for a number of years to put, we're required by state statute to provide office space for probation and parole employees. And we had housed some of those there. We have found other housing for those. We're housing some of those in the courthouse and some of those over in our office building in Kill Devil Hills. That will be a permanent arrangement, so they're there, they're not coming back to that building. And so, where we are is we've got to decide, are we going to spend, you know, $450,000 to $500,000 to repair that building or are we just going to take it down? And if we take it down, would there be a site to build something new there? Maybe or maybe not, because I'm not sure you could meet current day parking requirements by putting a new facility on there. We don't have a use for that. I don't have something that I'm telling you that, hey, I need to spend $450,000, $500,000 to fix that building because I got a use, I got something that needs to go in there. There are some community uses that might want to go in there, and we'll talk about that in the next agenda item. But you all have to make a decision on what you want to do with that. The capital improvement committee recommended that we just demolish the building and use it for additional parking for Cooperative Extension. But it's before you all to give us guidance on what direction to go.
What are the other, can we give what you're going to tell us about?
Sure. We'll talk about, we have the same situation, and this is item 14, with the old youth center property there behind, in front of the elementary school. Not quite as bad. That building is in better shape. I don't, and we're really not looking to tear that down, although we're not looking to put a whole lot of money into it either. What I've asked our staff to do is shore it up, make sure it's dry, make sure it's not moldy, make sure it's safe, and then we can decide what we want to do with it. Right now, there has been Right now, there has been two requests to use that building, and I'm sure they would be willing to use that other building if we wanted to put the money in it. One of those requests is, there's a group, and I think it's called Coats for Kids. In the old Kellogg building across the parking lot, in the end of that building is a warehouse, and in that warehouse are stored coats that people donate to Coats for Kids, and then kids who need warm coats in the wintertime can go there and get those coats. And it's a really good program, and they do a lot of good work, and they have a home. That warehouse area is not suitable for the public to come in and out of. It's really just for storage, and so we haven't allowed them to, like, open up a storefront and have an office and do all that stuff. We've said you can store, and if somebody needs a coat, you can show them the coats and all that. They would like to go into the old youth center property if we would allow them to do that. That would allow them to put a receptionist in there to have people come in and go and do some of the things and make their program a little bit better. And at the same time, I've gotten a call from, where's my list here? The Lost Colony Foundation, and the Lost Colony Foundation is looking for a place to have an office space as well. They've got some old artifacts that they've been looking for somewhere to store for a while, and they've moved those artifacts all around. Last I knew, they were storing them in the old middle school that we took down to build COA, and when we did that, they had to move them somewhere else. I'm not sure where they moved, but they had called, seeking office space, and I told them that, you know, that the old youth center was the only building that I had that was currently available, and there was other demands for that, and I didn't really know what direction we would go in, but when I went to the board, we would ask about it. So, again.
How much work has to be done to that building?
We can do that out of budget. It needs some paint, it needs some carpet, it needs some soffits fixed, it needs some, just some things that we would normally do anyway if we're going to keep the building, so yeah.
Nothing major.
Nothing major. And I've told them, I call it a lipstick on a pig building, as long as it's safe, as long as it's functional, we're not worried about making it.
Nobody's following through the floors.
Nobody's following through. It does have a soft spot in the floor they got to fix. It's not leaking, there's no mold, you know, those kind of things, then we can use it for these kinds of things. The other building is going to take some significant money to make it usable.
I went toward that Coats for Kids thing.
Well, let's stick to, let's stick to item 13, and we can talk about item 14.
Okay.
But.
So one question I have is, with all the building projects we have coming up in the future, do we have need of one of these spaces to transfer people into and out of during new construction from the old to the new?
The.
Kind of like a go-between building?
Brick building, the old probation office is not usable, it's unsafe.
No, I know that one, yeah.
The answer is no. I mean, I actually, if we were going to invest money in that building, that old probation building, I looked at, in our CIP, we have the sheriff's evidence office, and we looked at whether we could make that building work. We could spend, you know, $450,000 to give them a spot, but it's just not big enough. It doesn't really do what they need to do there. They went and looked at it and tried to help me make it work, and we couldn't figure out how to, they got to put eight or nine people in there or something like that, and then they got to have room for all their stuff.
Secure it.
Make it secure. That building just wasn't workable for that.
Okay.
So that didn't work, and that was the only other use that I had. In terms of over at Public Works, there's a, Dustin can speak to this because we were talking about it last week. Oakley Collier's got a plan, and really the only shortcoming in the plan that I know of right now is we're looking for a way, and I'm going to ask you about that in my business, of dealing with cardboard recycling during the construction phase, because we don't have anywhere to put the cardboard. The cardboard is the only revenue generating positive thing that we do in recycling, so it helps us in recycling. Where all the other recycling, we pay more to dispose of it than we get back.
But neither of these properties would solve that purpose.
So it doesn't help us much there either.
That answers my question, and that we don't have any use for it as far as anybody transferring in and out between buildings.
And I'll run that by them tomorrow at our staff meeting, but I don't, I'm not aware of any, if we have any internal needs, of course, they would come first, but I'm not aware of those.
So we're, if we demolish it, we're going to repair it, we're going to fix it up as a parking lot? Or pave it like a parking lot? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we'll fix it.
We have options. We have options, and that's one of the options.
One of the options is just to pave over the pad where it was, and it's part of the parking for that facility. Another option would be, down the road, is it available to build something on, and if so, could you make it fit with the town of Manio rules? I don't know the answer to that one. Depends on what we wanted to do with it.
Wouldn't be a big building.
Wouldn't be a big one.
Because lot coverage.
And parking.
Parking.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion demolish the former probation office.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to demolish that old probation office, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, and then that takes us to the old youth center property, and we've already talked about that some, so I guess I'm asking you, which of those uses, or do we not put any use in there? You tell me.
Bobby, I've got a question. Did they refine any place for the DMV? I know Bob was working with them.
Here's, here's the deal.
Because that'd be a good place.
It's been awarded to somebody over the Currituck, but we don't know where their facility is. They've not, they've not come to us and asked us, at least to me, I don't know about Bobby, asked for a site, so they must already have a site, but it's been awarded, and they've got to go to school and all that, so they're looking at May or June. But as far as location, I'm not sure if it's on Roanoke Island or the northern beaches.
I heard they got Islander Flags, one of the buildings they have on Islander Flags brought it right at the bridge.
Gotcha.
And people were raising dickens about it because it's so far from Hatteras and Manio and everywhere else.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's closer than Elizabeth City. It's closer than Elizabeth City.
That's right. But, but no, nobody's approached me about it.
The first group, well, for me, it's real close. The first group, that was the first person from Moyoc that was going to do it, asked, called and asked about office space, and I told essentially what I just told you, and she said they would get back to me, but they never did. I don't know if they didn't because it wasn't suitable, or they didn't because they.
Well, they didn't because they didn't get the award.
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't know what in between.
I mean, I've talked with her and said the same thing to her.
Yeah, so this group hasn't approached us about it.
That youth, I went and, they do more than just provide coats. They teach them how to buy, like, they give them, like, fake money, and they, it's more than just getting a coat. It's a lesson thing. I would like to make a motion to allow the clothing group.
One second before you do that. Is, you were talking about the old Kellogg building there, and I'm familiar with the building. I've been at plenty of times over the years and done maintenance in it myself, and it, is it something where we could potentially add an exterior door to make that more accessible for the coat group?
The problem with it is, is that the floor is not to coat.
Okay.
There's a lot of coating issues there.
Yeah.
And the building's not worth bringing the coat, so.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of the shape underneath it.
On that end, we brought the other end because that was an office space to coat, and that's where the Monarch folks are, but the other end is not to coat.
I'd like, I make the motion to move the coat group into the old youth center.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance to let the youth folks.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion?
Does the motion include the upgrade, maintenance, carpet, paint, et cetera?
We'll do that. We're going to do that anyway, because that's not a throwaway building, so we'll make that usable for whoever goes in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that brings us to the, to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of amendments from January 15th and February 3rd. You have the tax collector's report. Number three is the Game and Wildlife Commission Letter of Resignation. You need, that, you're required to approve that, so when you approve the consent agenda, you're accepting that resignation. Government Education Access Channel 2025, 2026 Proposed Budget, the Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report, and then the Contract from McGowan Association Associates for the Parks and Recreation Recommendation and Implementation Plan.
Motion to approve.
It's a motion on the floor by the vice chair to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is your board appointments. You have the Elder Adult Services Advisory Council. Barbara Franchi was not reappointed in 2024 due to a miscommunication. The Elder Adult Services Advisory Council recommends for her to be reappointed. This would leave only one vacant seat on the board.
Pleasure of the board.
Motion to reappoint Barbara Franchi.
There's a motion to reappoint Barbara Franchi by the vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. It still remains one vacant seat.
I don't understand.
And, and there are some applications on file, so we're not, is the board prepared to address that?
I am.
Okay.
I would propose Laura Lewis, our new director of the Tillot Center for this position, for this vacancy.
All right.
Second.
Okay, so motion then by Commissioner Ross and seconded by the vice chair for the vacant seat, Laura Lewis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the Parks and Rec Advisory Council. Cindy Perry's term has expired, and she'd like to be reappointed.
Nominate Cindy Perry to be reappointed.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to reappoint Cindy Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the Stumpy Point Community Center. There are currently only two members on the, on the community center board, and there are three vacancies that need to be filled.
Pleasure of the board.
I will make a motion to appoint, hold on one second.
I know, I'm going to pull them off the email.
I know who I want. Suzanne, Susan Pierce, Dabney Shelton, and, where was that?
What? Brandon.
Brandon Patzel.
So say again, the three names you are proposing?
Susan Pierce.
Okay.
Brandon Patzel. And Dabney Shelton.
And Brandon Patzel's not on this list, but you have, you have a sheet in front of you.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, you said earlier about the airport authority, type six, and you want to do it here?
Yep, that's correct. I'll yield to Commissioner Bateman.
Yes, sir. So Joe Blakottis passed away, super nice guy. He was on the board for quite a while, and at their last meeting, they expressed desire to have Stephen King Jr. to take his spot.
And is that a record?
Make that motion, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And then next is your upcoming board and committee appointments. You have the Mans Harbor Marina Commission with four terms expiring in April. In May, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring, the Veterans Advisory Council with one term expiring, the Working Waterman Commission with two terms expiring, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment with two terms expiring. And then in June, you have the College of the Almoral Board of Trustees with one term expiring, the Hatteras Community Center Board with three terms expiring, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with 11 terms expiring, the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board with three terms expiring, the Library Board with two terms expiring, the Mans Harbor Community Center Board with three terms expiring, the Roanoke Island Community Center Board with three terms expiring, and the Rodanthie Waves Salvo Community Center Board with one term expiring, and finally, the Water Waste Commission with three terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. It brings us to item 17, Commissioner's business, county manager, attorney business. Aside from the closed session you want later, is anything else you have on your agenda, county manager?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
One is, we've been approached, and Mary Ellen's been involved, to, about going to the General Assembly for the Rodanthie Waves Community Center to get them to look at some kind of authority for them to take over the maintenance of the bike trail there in Rodanthie, and I don't know where this is going to fall in the General Assembly's scheduling, if it, if it comes up at all. I'm not sure where the association's going at this point, but it's likely to happen before we have another meeting, so if we were going to be involved and supported, I wanted you all to be aware of it and give us some authority to work on that issue on behalf of the board in support of the community center. Did I say that right, Mary Ellen?
Yes, I did talk, I did talk to Cheryl Blankenship, and they are kind of working through some legal things. They want to make sure that they have all their Ts crossed and Is dotted, so I'm not sure it will come up in this session, but if it does come up, it would have to move quickly, so.
Okay.
So I guess.
Is there any possible reason we would not support this?
Yeah, I was going to say, is there any reason why we shouldn't?
I can't think of one.
It would simply allow them to use some of the tax dollars they already get to maintain that.
Maintain it. And that's kind of what I expressed to her. I can't imagine a scenario where we would say, no, we're not going to do that for you. So I'll make that motion to give you the authority.
Do you need a motion?
We need a board's approval before we go to the legislature. Our board's in favor of it. How we can do a resolution or a letter or whatever we need for the legislature.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. We had some contracts with Charter Communication that are multiple-year contracts, which normally have to come on your agenda, and they're not on your agenda because Matt and I have been going back and forth with them over some terms and conditions in their standard forms that are onerous to us. I don't know whether we can get them changed or not. Like, the venue for any disputes is in New York City, and we don't need to go to New York City to have an argument with them. On the other hand, you know, at some point, we don't have a choice, and so I don't know how much leverage we have to negotiate. What I'm asking you is to allow us to enter those three-year contracts, assuming that we get language that satisfies Matt and I to go forward with those, so that we don't have to wait all the way till our April meeting to bring those back to you.
Pleasure of the board.
I'll make the motion to go ahead.
Okay, there's a motion by the vice chair. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just quickly, Bobby or Matt, do we have any history of interaction that would require such people to a venue in New York?
To be honest with you, we've.
I can't stand anything in New York City, by the way.
The last rounds of contracts with them several years ago, I think probably had the same language in it. They bury it in a standard provisions, and you have to go click on the contract on the standard provisions and then click on their webpage, and you really have to go deep.
Deep to find venue, yeah.
We went deep this time, and I found it, and I'm like, wait a minute. It may not be, the things we're upset about may not be negotiable terms, and if they aren't, then we'll just have to do what we have to do. But if we can get them changed and get them to our advantage, then we'd like to do that. But there's no reason to come back to you either way.
Right, okay.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously.
We got a call, what day was it, Bob? Thursday of last week, Wednesday of last week from the Corps?
Yeah, it was like Wednesday, yeah.
Telling us that, well, let me give you a little bit of history. Last year's budget, Congressman Murphy tried to get some money put in the budget to do a study by the Corps for nourishment in Rodanthie and ask us to give a match. And it was a $3 million study, and I think our match was 50% of that, I believe. And we went back and forth and debated about whether to do it, whether to pay them or not, and because the reality is, none of us think the study's gonna meet the Corps standard. They have an economic impact number that's really, really, really hard to meet, and they can't use the multipliers that you would normally use for economics. It's gotta be the direct, so, you know, what is the value of those houses worth, the amount of the project there? And the Corps doesn't think it can meet that. Nonetheless, the last board approved that, and it didn't get in Congress, it didn't get budgeted, there was no money for that. Apparently, they're gonna try again for it in this round of budgeting, and they've come back and asked us to agree to the match, and they needed it by Friday. And I told them I couldn't give them an answer by Friday, that this board, half the board, even all the board, when we talked about this last time, and that I wasn't comfortable signing the, they basically wanted me to take the same letter we did last time and change the date, and I said I wasn't gonna do that without coming back to the board. And then when I talked to the chairman, he was uncomfortable as well. And so, anyway, here we are. That's why it's not all, because we just got it a little week. But the question becomes, do we agree to provide that match going forward? I think last time, we said we would take it out of the Beach Nursery Fund if we chose to do that, and if they chose to fund it. The only thing I'll tell you, a little bit more positive, in talking with the Corps after the last one, we had talked to them about doing it in incremental pieces. So go ahead and do the study, and if that costs $50,000, then you've got a $50,000 study. We pay our 25, you pay your 25. If it says it doesn't meet the criteria, then it's over. We never get to the 3 million.
How did we get to 3 million? I remember the whole thing, I just don't remember how we got up to 3 million for a study.
Well, the study was the engineering and the design and the whole nine yards. Get it ready for construction.
Right. And the state was gonna match half, and we were gonna match half.
Well, the federal, it was federal, I think, not state.
Federal.
They were gonna get, they were gonna get federal dollars, and to get the federal dollars, there was a 50-50 match, and we were committing to the other 50%, is what we did last time.
Yeah.
And we told them, well, don't go spend $2.5 million designing it if you don't meet the criteria at the beginning. And at that time, they agreed that's what they would do. So that's where we were. That's what they're asking us to do again.
Can, you mentioned that they've got very strict at the Fed level, economic impact indicators. Would those factors potentially be answered and revealed under the 50,000, 70,000, whatever initial statement?
I made up those numbers, to use your expression, off the number tree. I don't have any idea what that cost is, but they, my goal was, is let's don't spend money unnecessarily. Let's take it incrementally, and at any point where it kicks it out, then we only have to pay half of it at that point. And the study seemed like the first point.
So do you want a motion to that effect, that you want to do it in increments, for you to go back and negotiate it?
No, if we're gonna do it at all, we have to, there's a, we have to tell them that yes, we'll cover the half of the study cost. We're committing to that million and a half.
But we have no idea how much that is gonna cost.
We don't know whether we'll spend some of it or all of it until we see where they go.
That's a little.
Guys, we battled this in the town of Kitty Hawk for a long time, because we didn't have the infrastructure, as you just said, to match, to justify them do it along the criteria they laid out. We never went the Army Corps route. You know, right now in Virginia Beach, they just got the money from the Army Corps to do their whole oceanfront, but they have the economic structure there.
The other thing is, there, last year, they were three to four years away from being able to do the study. I mean, so this isn't a short-term.
I feel like this is throwing a dart in the dark.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Pretty much is.
Not enough information to make that decision, just to spend $1.5 million on a guess that...
We don't spend it upfront. I mean, it's, we don't spend it unless they spend it.
Yeah, but if they spend it, they don't, 1.5 to them is nothing.
They gotta, they gotta get it appropriated first.
Right.
And then the Corps has to get it in their work plan, second, and then the Corps has to do the work, third, and then, and then depending on where they are in the process determines what our liability would be not to exceed that 1.5 million. That's the process.
But we don't qualify for it.
That's what, that's what we think.
I mean, that's a no-brainer.
That's right.
Leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Yep.
Okay. I don't need a motion to say no, so.
No. Okay, thank you.
Because you already said no.
I'm sorry, I got a long list here, and some of it we've done. Okay. Commissioner Burris brought it up earlier, and we were talking about the use of that building, and did we have a use in our process of demolition at the Public Works? So I mentioned cardboard recycling. All the cardboard in the county from the towns and everywhere comes to us, and we recycle it, and it's a positive cash flow. I think it's over 100,000 a year in cash. And so we do that, and the net to us is somewhere around 40 to the good, 43, I think, or something along those lines. When we get ready to demolish that, we don't have a plan or a good way to deal with that. And the concern from Public Works is, is if we just say we're not gonna do recycling during the two years that we're under construction, then the towns go out and find their own thing, and then they make the revenue, and we lose the revenue that helps subsidize our recycling program a little bit. And so we, from their perspective, they'd like to find a way to keep the business going and keep it rolling while the construction is gone. They've gone out and had bid, and Dustin, you help me with these numbers. They, we can build a metal building that meets the wind code out at the transfer station. They need a building out there anyway. It's not a critical need, so it hasn't made its way up, but the cost to do that's about, I think it was 85,000?
88,000.
$88,000. So that $88,000 about washes out our loss in revenue during the construction phase, and then when we're done, we have a metal building that we can use for something else. So it seemed like a reasonable way to solve a problem, and it helped us in the future as well. The source of the money is, we had put $2 million in a fund to do a whole litany of maintenance projects, and some of those came in under budget, so there's at least $85,000 left in that budget that we could use to do that. I asked, you know, are there priority items that we're gonna not be able to do because we spent that 85? They said no, that the lost revenue, the use of that building would outweigh anything else. And so we have a source in current funds to do that. We just need permission to go forward if you agree that's the appropriate way to go.
I got just one quick question. As far as moving, like, the equipment for, that they use to do the cardboard, would that be something we move over there, and then we're gonna have new equipment come in with the new building? Because it's gonna maybe be situated in a different area, or?
We're gonna have a new building, and we're gonna have the same equipment, and our equipment, all of our equipment is replaced on a schedule, so we're not getting all new equipment just because we got a new building, unless it's at the end of its life cycle.
Gotcha. So we'd have to move the equipment over to Mans Harbor?
We'll take the equipment over there, do our job, and then when we come back, we'll move it back over.
Yeah, makes the...
Makes sense to me, too.
Make a motion to move forward. All right. There's a motion by Vice Chair to move forward with that. It's our second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Those in favor, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign? Motion passes.
And that's all I have, other than the closed session.
Okay. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
Just quickly, the presentation from PIPSY that we saw this morning about the guys at Pea Island, the checkerboard.
Etheridge.
Yes. It reminded me, we've formed our America 250 Committee for the county, and we've met several times. Joan is actually a member of our committee, so that's something that will definitely be included as we start putting the calendar together, particularly for next year. And we have about 30 participants, so we've got a lot of folks that are really excited about serving. We applied for two grants. We have not heard back on those two grants, but hopefully, the one larger grant...
Both state or?
State grants, and one was for $30,000, and the Daughters of the American Revolution are leading that grant to work with the schools, to bring education in, and some artistic, hopefully some community artistic projects that could eventually be launched. But I did want to bring y'all up to speed. I think as we make more progress, we'll come back. But our theme is the land of beginnings, highlighting all the many firsts that have occurred here, and that just piqued my, I said I need to tell them that we are making progress and doing some really good work.
Good. Thank you, Dora. County Finance Director, Dave, you got anything else for us?
I do. We met, Dustin and I, and Celine met with the FEMA team last Thursday. It was our coordinator and our, the Beach Nursery Specialist, Bob Glasson, about Buxton Beach Nursery, and Bob had his team also. They've been down there. Patrick Barinow with Coastal Science and Engineering had done an estimate, and I told you before, his estimate was around 175 to 200,000 cubic yards of loss, because we were declared eligible for potential tropical storm number eight, which was last September, and mainly affected down in Brunswick and New Hanover County. But NC Emergency Management got us qualified while they were dealing with all the Helene stuff. Joe Stanton did the work and got us eligible. When you do sand loss estimates, you do it in between surveys, and then FEMA adjusts for what they call the long-term background erosion rate. Our surveys were almost a year apart because they kept not able to get out to do the preseason surveys in last summer, and they ended up doing one after the September event. And Patrick had gone back and tried to adjust the erosion rate for specific named storms and be conservative. And it turns out, he was very conservative, because we went from 175,000 cubic yards to what FEMA accepted from Patrick's report, he submitted it last Friday, 1,351,000 cubic yards.
Woo, dang. But you were close, 175 was close.
How do you get, how do you miss by a factor of 10, 8?
FEMA said their long-term erosion rate is a very long-term erosion rate, and it adjusts, or it takes into account specific even named storms into that erosion rate, and Coastal Science adjusted for those specific named storms.
I don't even know what that means, Dave.
Well, say it's 50,000 cubic yards a month, but CSC knew that we had storms in August and January and February. They adjusted for estimates for sand loss from those specific named storms.
So they increased their estimate for sand loss from those storms?
Yes, yes. And FEMA says, no, our erosion rate, and I don't know how long, but it is a very long-term erosion rate, and it takes those events into account.
I don't know what that means.
That means they give us credit for them to our good.
They give us credit and said they've adjusted for those named storms.
They're counting that as a part of our storm loss. Where intuitively, you wouldn't normally count that as part of our storm loss.
Why wouldn't you intuitively count it?
Because they weren't, usually it's done based on named storms, not based on unnamed, undeclared storms. And so we're getting some benefit from some of these unnamed storms that took away our beaches that we don't normally get.
Eight X, eight times? I mean, I get that, Bobby, if it was a million one and FEMA was a million three.
Your jaw is where mine was when I heard that.
Don't look at a gifted old man in a mask.
Well, it's like too good to be true. So I'm looking from where's the shoe gonna drop, you know? Where's the catch?
The good news is that...
And we've got experts, right?
We had planned...
These aren't experts, these aren't like shoe salesmen from Elizabeth City. These guys do this.
Hey, don't pick on Elizabeth City.
It's gonna sink.
Could be she selling some wine cheese, or Ohio. Our beach nursery model included a million cubic yard project in '27, which we changed to '26, which was gonna, our estimate, the cost of that was 17.3 million. Now, CSC right now is, their new recommendation is a 2 million cubic yard project, but with this FEMA loss number, that'll cost us $3.5 million less than what we had as our cost in the beach nursery model.
Which, that's good news.
Well, that, I'm gonna, I didn't flip my page, but one of the, that takes me to one of the things that I didn't talk to you about. I was at the Coastal Resources Commission meeting last week, and in that meeting, I had conversations with them and their staff about the groins that are down by the lighthouse in the Buxton project. And we've talked a long time about repair of those groins and what that would do to the, like, the life of a nourishment project there in Buxton. We had Patrick and his team look at those, and they're telling us that they believe that they can meet the 50% rule, which was the rule that was preventing us from repairing those groins or jetties that are there. And if he can, and he's gonna put, if he's willing to seal it and tell Coastal Resources that, they've told me that they would give us a permit under the 50% rule that would allow us to go forward. And I talked with Dave Hallick about where would the Park Service be, and he said, well, there's a process to go through. You gotta do your environmental thing, but yeah, we would have those conversations as well, and we get what you're trying to do and why you're doing it. So we have a path forward there that for a longest time, we didn't have. We have a funding source for it, because the cost of doing this is about that $3 million we just saved. And so we could do the project, repair the groin, and spend the same amount of money that we had budgeted for that project already and move forward. And so my question for you all is, is do I move forward and ask CSC to begin their, is it CSC or CPE?
CSC.
CSC. CSC to begin the work to permit the repair of that groin system so that we could enhance the life of that project.
I agree.
Yeah, sooner the better.
So I need a motion and a...
Motion to move forward. There's a motion by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Burris and...
Everybody.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman, as I flipped the page, I had two more things are short. One is, the Water Waste Commission you all appointed.
I knew he wasn't done.
Commissioner Creep and Commissioner Balance, and it took our number to eight, which was fine. Normally, it had been seven, because we needed an odd number and all that. Michael Flynn is gonna come off of the board. His duties and jobs are making it where he can't participate like he'd like. And so the question from the Water Waste Commission is, do we just leave it at seven, or are we gonna try to replace him?
Yeah, I'd leave it at seven.
All right, so I'm gonna let Barton know, just back at the right number, and Skylar know that we don't have a vacancy there, and then we'll leave it back like we had it. And then the last thing is just informational, is you drive down the causeway, you see that big pipe on the side of the road.
That's gonna stay at that?
So they're gonna take that pipe, just so you know, and they're gonna, that pipe is the pipe that goes under the sound. They're gonna build 7,000 feet of that pipe. It's gonna go almost to the intersection with that pipe on it. When they get the whole 7,000 feet of pipe built, they then hook it to whatever they hook it to and start their bore and nonstop... they hook it to and start their bore and non-stop, twenty-four-seven, they're going to push all that seven thousand feet of pipe that you see lined up under the sound, under the bridge, and back over to Nag's Head on the opposite side of the road where it comes up there in Nag's Head over a period of however many days without stopping. So I just, I share that with you because I thought it was fascinating, and I was probably, everybody's probably wondering why they got all that pipe laying there, how they're going to get it underneath the sound, and that's how they do it.
Seven thousand feet of pipe?
Seven thousand feet of pipe, thirty, thirty minutes pipe.
This is an engineering marvel.
Five thousand two-hundred-and-eighty feet and a mile, so a mile and what?
Well, over a mile.
Mile and a quarter?
A mile and a quarter, yeah.
Mile and a quarter.
It's kind of cool how they have it set up.
Well, it is. That's why I said it's an engineering marvel.
Well, they, I asked them how to do it. They have a thing that they push on one end, they have a rig they put on the other end, and they run it back.
A bunch of guys.
It's like sixteen million dollars.
They have a cable that goes through a pipe that is already bored under the sound. They hook it to something on the other side, and they pull with the cable and push with the whatever they have on the other end, and between the two, they take it right over there. It's amazing.
Wow. That amazes me. That kind of stuff is...
And we're all scheduled on top, so we should, absent something happening, we'll make the season, and we won't have water problems.
Okay, Dave, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay. I am finished now.
Really?
Do you want to turn another page?
Yeah, you want to turn another page?
Matt, turn off his microphone. Just mute him.
All right. Item eighteen, we need a motion to go into close.
Are we going to do any Commissioner business before the close session?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Let's see who I want to kick us off today. Urban, how about you kicking it off?
I'll do it. So we had the polar plunge. Had a great time, y'all. It was a blast.
It was.
And my fellow commissioners were there, had an enjoy the fellowship. When I was getting ready to go in, this young lady said, would you please go in with my son? And so I said, sure. And so grabbed the hold of his hand, he's a little fella, and we got down to the water, and he started squeezing my hand. By the time we got in there, and we did not go completely submerged, because he was not up to that, I could not feel the water because my hand was being squeezed so hard.
Wow.
But when he got out, y'all, he was so proud of himself, and his mom, it just broke my heart, made my heart feel good. And it was just an amazing thing, whatever, but he just, he was squeezing so hard on my hand. You know, make a long story short, we had a great time and great time for all. I'm sure Rob's got the figures on how much money.
I was just going to say, how many plungers did we have, Commissioner?
Three hundred.
I saw just over four hundred registered, maybe not quite as many showed, but over four hundred registered. And how much money did we weigh, or raise, excuse me? Survey says over fifty-eight thousand, Mary Helen.
It's crazy.
Big day for Dare County Special Olympics. That's right.
The other thing, I think the first year that we had it, me and Rob did it, I believe, Rob, didn't we do it the first time?
Sure we did.
And what was it, two dozen, three dozen?
Yeah, we had a couple dozen people standing on the beach with Sandy, you, me. We took a picture, went in the water, and I think all in, we probably raised, I don't remember, five, six thousand?
Y'all keep that tradition.
A few thousand, no, it's fifty-eight, so.
You're telling with us next year.
Y'all just keep it up.
Yeah, we're doing all seven of us next year.
Chairman's established the firm? No. We'll take that as a hard no.
I've done that in the past many times.
Well, great, you're experienced and...
Experienced.
The other thing I was going to share with y'all, I went to a presentation somewhere, and they were talking, the Richard Etheridge lifesaving folks, and they used to take this, this gun or whatever, they would shoot this long line.
Yes, they did, to the ship that was in distress.
Over the bow of the boat. And then they'd retrieve the passengers from that thing. It was amazing, dude.
Yeah.
I mean, you had to be a good shot, because sometimes they were, six hundred yards off the beach.
And I'm betting it wasn't a clear sunny day.
I bet it weren't either. But it was just amazing how they did that stuff, and we can't give these guys enough credit.
That's fantastic.
I love history, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody knows, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, due to our snowstorm, they canceled their meeting and rescheduled it. So it will be March the twelfth and the thirteenth at the Kitty Hawk Garden in Hilton. And public comment will be at 2:00 PM on Wednesday the twelfth and 6:00 PM on Wednesday the twelfth. And I very much recommend it, as many people show up as possible and give them the insight of what Dare County's commercial fishing industry means to them. And hopefully we start getting some regulations changed and at least opened up a little bit. They have a full schedule of different fishing management plans that are on their list for this particular meeting. I know we're a big supporter of our blue crab industry, and that is one of the fish management plans they've got on their agenda. So some of their data that they have throughout all the fish management plans, some of it's good, some of it's not so good, but we just need to let them know that we support our commercial fishing industry here in Dare County. And also, first and foremost, definitely thank them for being here in Kitty Hawk. It's the first time in six years they've been here. So before, if you do decide to go do public comment, one of the first things I will ask you, all of us to do, is to thank them for coming to Kitty Hawk. Ms. Katie, at the entrance to the Oregon Alot Fishing Center, our new permitted depth was ten feet, and prior to that, it was eight feet. So Ms. Katie was doing her ten-foot depth and actually ran across some hardened structures. And at first, we thought it was like rock or riprap or some type of concrete block, and EJ decided they would have a diver go down, take a look at it, come to find out it was more than just a little rock, as you can tell by these pictures. And with the authorization of Army Corps of Engineers, the National Park Service, and KAMA, EJE started excavating the project. Now, as you see, a big piece of sheet pile coming up there, one of these pictures will just simply amaze you. And normally, a project like this would have to be bid out, and would take several months to get it done. And once that bidding process would have taken place, then this excavation process would be taking place at the same time when our fishing charter boats would be heavily impacting that area. Ms. Katie and EJE dredging has decided, or did decide at that time, to speed the process up, and with the authorization of KAMA, National Park Service, and the Army Corps of Engineers, EJE dredging is doing this whole excavation project on their dime and not charging anybody for it, just for the safety of our watermen and getting out.
Kind of reflective of a healthy public-private partnership, I would say.
Exactly. And I see those two pictures. Have you got that other one with the, no?
Steve, is that sheathing for a ball kid?
That's sheathing for a ball kid.
There was a big piling.
Yeah, Matt, do you have one with a piling on it?
I only got a piece of wood.
Oh, okay. There's also one that's got a big concrete piling on it. After doing a little bit further research, we have probably found where this stuff came from was during the reconstruction of the Bonner Bridge after the dredge hit it.
You should take the span?
Yeah, when it took the span out, we believed that this was stuff that was on a barge, either going out to the side or coming back from the side, and fell off the barge. So EJE has picked up all that material. They still got a couple more other little things in there to pick up, but like I said, to speed the process up and to make it safe for our mariners, they're doing it at their expense. So I wanted to make that, and thank EJE for doing that for us and keeping our waterways safe. And Matt, I haven't heard, did we have a pet of the week for this week? All right.
Our pet of the week this week is Bernadette. Bernadette is a two-year-old calico. She does prefer to be the only cat in the household, where she can be the star of the show. This sweet girl thrives on human companionship, and she loves to snuggle in your lap. If you're searching for a loving feline friend, Bernadette is your girl. To adopt Bernadette or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org.
So please, run down to SPCA and check out Bernadette, and hopefully you can give her a new home, and check out the other dogs and cats they've got out there, and hopefully you can give them their forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Ross?
Okay, let me start by saying thirty-five years for the youngest-looking Finance Director in North Carolina. Congratulations, Dave, that's an amazing record, and we're all deeply grateful for everything. It's fantastic, and I didn't realize it had been that long, but again, thank you so very much. I'm sure I speak for everybody, grateful to hear, good news, Commissioner Creep is at home and recovering and doing well. Attended the economic summit for, I guess it would be Dare County Economic Summit, but we had speakers from North Carolina, Department of Economic Development, so forth, and they kept referencing the state of North Carolina ranks in the top five, if not the number one for business development, business-friendly environment. And so I asked the speaker, Christopher Chung with the State Economic Development, gee, since that's the top tier that we're in, for context, who's in the bottom tier? Who are the bottom guys? And he listed New Jersey, Illinois, Vermont, I think New Hampshire was on that list. And I asked him, any common denominator there, Christopher? Yeah, kind of the taxes. So it's great for our state, it's great to hear business coming here, building our infrastructure, our economic future, jobs. It was a very good and very positive show. On March twenty-second, Mr. Sloan is no longer here from OBX Health Hospital, but I was going to ask him to speak to or endorse the fact that on the twenty-second, at Duckwoods Country Club, there will be a Blue Zones Gala. It is a fundraiser for the OBX Health Hospital. I plan to be in attendance. I was there last year. It was an excellent, excellent event, and I would urge you to take a look at it. It's a Blue Zones, we're expanding Blue Zones in Dare County and helping the hospital gala event at Duckwoods. And lastly, once again, that institution of St. Patrick's Day Parade will be the sixteenth, Sunday at 1:00 PM. Kelly St. Patrick's Day Parade is on. So that's my update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Balance?
I'm going to be brief, believe it or not. Just wanted to say that with all these committees, assignments that are coming up, that are coming up for, I think it's really important to stay involved in your community. So if you're thinking about joining one of these boards, I would encourage you to get your applications in, because it is important to be a part of what's happening in your community, and getting on those advisory boards is certainly a first step. The polar plunge, I too had a lady come up to me right at the last minute and said, will you go in with me? Because she was there by herself in a group with people she didn't know, so we held hands and ran in, and I was, had a panic attack leading up to it, but it really wasn't so bad. Of course, it was a nice balmy weather. It was warm that day.
It was. The weather was pretty cooperative.
It was very nice, it was good. But I thought it was going to be horrible, and it wasn't so bad. So next year, we should all be there. And that's, I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burris?
I would like to say, February was a very busy month. We had quite a few different things we could all go to. I know we get a lot of the same emails, a lot of the same invitations. That week with the polar plunge, dedicating the, or doing the opening, grand opening there for the youth center, was just a fantastic week for me, seeing the smiles on the faces of those young children with the youth center, and the smiles on the faces of our Special Olympians over at the polar plunge. I guess maybe Commissioner Ross and I, we didn't have anybody want to hold our hands. Did you?
Nobody said a word to me.
Yeah, so.
Look at me.
Yeah. We'll work on that for next year, maybe.
Hell, I was standing around the water with my hand like this, and everybody was just walking away.
But we also, we also, the two of us, took the full plunge, you know, from head to toe, and enjoyed that. It's just fantastic month, a lot of the Pipsy presentation at COA, you know, that you guys got to see a good part of here today. Like I said, it's a part of our history and our heritage here, for so many local families to be represented on that video is fantastic. And a couple opportunities moving forward this month. Dare Arts, fifty dollars for fifty years, fifty for fifty, that's still going on, so you can go online, do a credit card right there online. And then something to which I'm a part of is the OBX United Travel Basketball Program. Both the young women and young men's programs will be kicking off here soon. We've completed tryouts. So they always, it's a nonprofit, so they raise money to help pay for the tournaments, and that way, none of the children feel like they can't participate because they have to pay into it themselves to be a part of it. So we try and raise all the funds to pay for the uniforms and for tournament entry fees. So there's two options right there, if anybody has a little extra money on hand and wants to give back. Other than that, I don't have much else, and I just want to say I appreciate everybody this month, had a lot of fun going to a lot of different events with you. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Commissioner. County Manager, you want to read the?
Yes, sir. I need a motion to go into close session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by our behalf of the county in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of the real property in the matter of the White and Sawyer property. And then I need a general motion pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3 to consult with the attorney employed or retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and receive an update with regards to the Cummins matter.
Motion to both. Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair. Is this second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burris. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous. Any Board of Commissioners need you back to your order? Turn it over to the County Manager.
Close session, the Board approved the minutes of the last closed session. They consulted with the county attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and they gave the county attorney instructions on proposed terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property and took no other action.
Thank you, County Manager. Anybody doesn't have anything else? I need a motion to adjourn until April the seventh. Motion to adjourn. Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sent? Motion carries unanimous.